The meeting of the Hawaiian Homes Commission is called to order. The meeting is being held live and in person at Kulano Oeve Halau, 600 Mauna Loa Highway, Kalamuula Molokai 966748, and virtually via interactive conference technology. I'm Kali Watson, Chairman of the Hawaiian Homes Commission, and today's date is Tuesday, April 18, 2023, and the time is 9:45. Uh, maybe we follow the roll?
Mr. Awol?
Yeah?
Um, Commissioner Helm?
Yeah.
Mr. Teria?
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Kalakini?
Hi.
Commissioner Namuon?
Here.
Commissioner Nevin? Commissioner Freitas?
Here.
Chair Watson?
Here.
Nine members present, we have a call.
Uh, there's a one carryover item from yesterday's agenda, or excuse me, two. Uh, item E4 and item G5, climate change. So let's, uh, first of all, I'd like to welcome people in the audience here to participate in our commission meeting. Uh, it's always very, very important for the commission is to get your input. I, I noticed we have a very long, uh, item J agenda, so I guess we're gonna get a lot of input today, so look forward to it. Uh, let's start with, uh, item E4, which is the update on the Act 279, the $600 million, and how we're in the process of using it.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. Stuart Matsonaga, Acting Administrator for Land Development Division. Um, first thing I wanted to say was, um, you know, I apologize if last night I mentioned that the water shutdown was last night, but it's tonight. Okay, so. I woke up this morning, I was dreaming, and I was saying, hey, what did I say? Anyway. Yeah, so, but yeah, good practice for conservation, because we need it every day. Again, Mahalo for that. Um, so, um, item E4 is, um, an implementation progress report.
Excuse me, Chair?
March 31st.
Yes.
Yeah, we, we need some volume, we can't hear you on the internet.
Okay, I will repeat again. Um, so this is implementation progress report as of March 31st for Act 279 Session Laws of Hawaii 2022, and this is the $600 million bill. Uh, what I provided in the submittal is a background and discussion of the implementation, and I wanna focus you to the Exhibit A, uh, which is a, um, matrix that breaks down, um, uh, each project, and what I'd like to do is focus you to the encumbered, uh, column. And so, um, these are the projects and, uh, contracts that we've encumbered, uh, as of March 31st. Uh, the first one being Puunani Homestead Subdivision, uh, $17 million. So we've provided the contractor developer, um, with a notice to proceed, and we should have a groundbreaking in May. Uh, the next project, Puunani Homestead Subdivision, um, this is the offsite water tank, uh, $5.5 million has been encumbered. Uh, construction plans are being prepared, and we will be bidding this project out in the summer of 2023. So this water tank will support, uh, the Puunani Homestead Subdivision, 161 lots provide the water storage for this project. Uh, Honokouai Subsistence Ag Phase 1, uh, 50 subsistence ag, uh, lots. Uh, we have a, uh, a design contract for $1.47 million that's been encumbered, and so that project is being, um, designed, um, as we speak. Kapewa Phase 2, um, this is a, um, about a, a nine-acre parcel in Kapole that we acquired, uh, 8.25 million, and we have a, uh, request for proposals, uh, um, for the development of a minimum of 60 residential lots. Uh, we have, um, we expect to open, uh, offers, um, April 28th of this month. The other project that we have encumbered today is Hanapepe Residence Lots, Phase 2 for 82 residential lots, and that development agreement, uh, was encumbered for 17.8 million. Uh, we have a statewide land acquisition of professional services contract, where we have a consultant assisting the department with project management, um, staffing at $1.5 million. Uh, we recently acquired, on the second page, um, this is proposal C, Kamana Avalon Development, uh, acquisition of, uh, $2 million that was encumbered. So, uh, to date, we have, uh, $53.7 million encumbered out of the 172.75 million that has been allotted and released by the governor. Um, what we have currently in progress, um, is about $200 million in development projects, um, in, uh, Onahu, on Maui. Uh, and, uh, so what we're targeting on that is to have development agreements, uh, ready for, uh, contract certification in June of this year. Uh, that would bring our total potential encumbrance up to, um, about 250 million. So we will be requesting, uh, an additional allotment, uh, from the governor, um, in, as soon as we have, um, the numbers, um, clarified, and we, we bring those contracts to, um, to certification. Uh, I wanna also note that, um, back on the first page, Laio Pua villages, um, 1 and 2, the North Corner Water Development, uh, we have two, um, uh, two negotiations going on right now, uh, with, um, uh, community schools and with, uh, private landowner. Uh, and so we're continuing to pursue the, the acquisition of, uh, both of these projects for Laio Pua. And with that, I'll, um, open for any questions, concerns, Commissioner Maya?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Stuart. Well, let's take our minds back to the West Side, Oahu. Okay, so Kapewa Phase 2, um, it's blank here, but you mentioned 60 lots. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so with the 60 lots proposal, I understand that the beneficiaries wanted a park in that area. Is that in this plan?
It will be, um, something that the developer will, uh, will have to propose. So we did identify that to the, uh, developers in the RFP, and that we, we are looking for a minimum of 60 units, and so the offers can propose, um, uh, besides, uh, cluster mailbox common area, and besides the, uh, implementation of traffic signals, Kapole Parkway, uh, any kind of recreation area, if there is, uh, space still available, because we do wanna achieve at least 60 units to make this, uh, development viable in this area. So there is an option or potential for.
Will there be funding for that part proposal?
This would be, this would be in, would be part of, um, the offer proposal provided by, uh, by developers. We have a number of developers interested in this project, and so we're, uh, we're hopeful that there, there can be something, but it really depends on how they lay out the 60 lots.
Okay, and, and so the reason I bring this up is that we, we should continue to engage with the Kapewa Homestead residents, because I know that they're hoping and wishing on their wish list for a park, so, you know. Um, we should just keep updating the Kapewa Homestead Association, because they're expecting 60 homes plus a community park. So the other one is on the second page, you have, um, Proposal A, Eva Villages Haseko. What, what is that, 142 lot? Where is this at?
Uh, this, well, it is in Eva Villages, but I will have to get back to you on specific location. I don't, I'm not exactly sure where, uh, that is, and, um, Darien on our staff is working on that, um, that contract.
So we, we purchased property in Eva, in Eva, is that correct?
It's, it's going through the process right now. The proposal has been accepted, and so staff still has to come up with, um, we have to still, uh, prepare, uh, conveyance documents as well as the development proposal.
So Stuart, this is a different, um, property. This is not the Tsunami Weather Center, the surplus plant in Eva, correct?
Correct, this is not the, um, yeah, this is not the parcel on, um, Eva Beach Road, it's not the parcel.
Because this one is new, I didn't see this as we, okay, so what you had on your spreadsheet the last time was this Proposal A. So today, you have on this spreadsheet with Eva Village.
Yeah, we've identified, we, we've identified that, and I can, uh, provide you with, um, more detailed information on that.
Okay, and just lastly, thank you, Mr. Chair. So just lastly, just to advocate again for the one night calls, we understand that Miley Villages, um, uh, Miley Villages next to Uloke Kikui, that would be an FYI 24. Design.
That is, that is in the plan right now.
Design, planning, and construction.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, just need that for the record. Thank you, thank you.
It is in the plan.
Okay.
Commissioner Helm?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Stuart, uh, based on your presentation, uh, so you, you will be encumbering $205 million out of that $600 million so far? Is that correct?
So we've encumbered, uh, 53 million to date.
Okay.
Uh, so, uh, the department is, uh, in the process of, um, negotiating development agreements for, uh, four, uh, proposals on the second page, and the, those four proposals are totaled to approximately, uh, $200 million. So this will be in addition to the 53 million that we've, uh, encumbered to date.
Okay, so what I noticed also is that the funding that has been encumbered, it looks like between, uh, 2023, 2024, you're looking at 461 lots to be developed under this, uh, funds, right? But that's what I came up with.
Excuse me, folks, can you speak close to the mic? We cannot hear you. Thanks, I.
Yeah, so what I, I come up with is 461 lots, so that will be developed under this, uh, funding that you had presented, is that correct?
Uh, the total for this fiscal year, uh, is approximately, uh, 1,845 lots. So the, these are still lots that are either in planning, it could be in design, or they will be in construction.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Kalakini?
Um, Mahalo Chair Stuart, so just to make clarity, uh, it looks like we're on track to, uh, reach up to 250 million in this, this three different phases that you mentioned, design, construction, and what was the third one?
Planning.
Planning.
We also have the acquisition phase for the Kamana, uh, proposal.
So all of those activities total up 250 million, right?
Uh, yes.
Roughly, yeah.
Yes.
And then so, to date, we've uncovered the 53.7, and the expenditure limit, we're at 10.2, do we anticipate reaching the 52 million, uh, before the, whenever the timing expires?
It's not likely that we would exceed 53.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and that's a good thing, because it, um, impacts, um, the state's, um, it's the, um, memorandum of, yeah.
But if we don't, uh, meet the M O D, does that adversely impact our, our project?
No, it doesn't. We're actually limited to that amount, otherwise the state would have to fund the additional,
Got it.
Provide additional funds to DOE and UH.
Okay, Mahalo Stuart, thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Commissioner Awol? Mahalo Chair, um, Stuart, so I'm looking at the submittal, and it says, please note there's continuing controversies surrounding the establishment of the lapse date. The department is seeking clarity of the lapsing date with the Department of the Attorney General. But my question is twofold, for, for those who are listening in today, who may not fully understand what that controversy is, and the impact it may have on Act 279 funding, could someone explain what that is? And then also, for the AG, where are we at on attaining clarity? That's the two questions that I have.
If, um, if you read, uh, Act 279, uh, it provided for a lapsing date, uh, written into the bill of June 30th, 2025. Uh, however, we were, um, informed that, um, that date may not be, uh, and, and I, I think I need help from Alyssa, uh, uh, constitutionally allowed because of the year in which, um, uh, the Act, Act 279 was enacted in session law 2022, which was, um, the second year of the fiscal biennium, under which our normal CIP, um, lapses two years, uh, henceforth, so it would be lapsing in, uh, June 30th, 2024. And so therein for, for LDD at least anyway, lies, we're not real clear whether Act 279, um, the funding not encumbered lapses in 30, 2024, or June 30th, 2025, as written into the bill. And so I, I think, uh, there, um, was, uh, legislation proposed to clarify that, to, um, correct or extend, um, the date formally to June 30th, 2025. But that, uh, bill I understand is, may not be, uh, going forth, um, in the Senate.
Yeah, let me, let me provide some clarification too. We did go into the legislature, submitted a bill to, kinda, have, uh, clarity, but also make it consistent with, uh, Act 279, which was intent for it to last as of June 30th, uh, 2025. Uh, the House was on board, the Senate.
The Senate said in the position that, well, let's see how you do in the first couple of years and then we'll give you an extension. It, it's more, I, I think, a, a means by which, at least in the case of the Senate, to continue to maintain control as well as have this bold threat that if you don't spend it in timely fashion, uh, we're going to take the money back. It's going to lapse into the general fund. So, uh, it's on us to make sure we can perform. Uh, we do have, which you folks have approved, the strategic plan involving twenty projects. Uh, so we are moving forward as Stuart has given you the update. Uh, we're also looking at other means in which to encumber these funds, which if there is a change different from what you guys have approved regarding the use of funds for your budget, uh, that will be presented, discussed, and then actions will be taken by you folks to approve that type of changes. I anticipate that there's going to be quite a few other projects that are going to become, coming before you guys. They may include expansion of some of these existing projects that you've identified whereby we're just doing the first phase under your plan. And so if we increase, we want to do maybe more units, then we'll get your authority to do it. Or if the budget ceiling that you provided for that particular project is doable, we'll just stay within that budget, we'll just increase the number. That's why the developer agreement, as well as the approach that we're going to use, which is for clarification also, uh, in order to meet these deadlines, we, the department, including our staff, will have to be a lot more aggressive than a typical R F P approach. And that's why we're bringing on some staff to use the R F Q where we identified developers. We're also going to consolidate some of these projects such as the Kupel A, which involves about seven hundred units. In that case, rather than piecemealing it, doing the infrastructure, putting out another R F P for the housing, we're going to consolidate it, put out an R F Q, identify it. Developer can do, can do everything, infrastructure, as well as the vertical construction all at once and phase it in a way that's a lot more efficient, a lot more timely. But let me also add that the, uh, this particular Act Two Seventy-Nine requires encumbrance of the funds. So that, we're not going to have a problem doing that. We'll be able to encumber it in a very, very timely fashion. In fact, we'll probably maybe revolve some of these funds, encumber it, get replacement funds such as other infrastructure funding, such as takeout loans by the home sellers as they buy these units so we can take back our construction money that we loaned to the developer in certain cases and then use it on additional projects. And, uh, you know, there's also quite a few lands that are being submitted for consideration, uh, which, once we vet it, we'll bring it to the commission. And we might even have a workshop to go over all these different other projects that we're looking at. But getting back to your specific question and your valid concern regarding the timeliness of these projects, I think we, we will be able to accomplish that. But again, on the particular deadline, uh, the Senate has kind of taken an approach where they want to see how we're doing in the early part. And we, based on what you folks have approved, uh, we anticipate to encumber a certain amount. But by using the leveraging approach, we're going to free up some of that money that you set aside to other projects, either expanding existing projects or identifying new projects, which I think is exciting because we're looking at some really good sites throughout the state that I think will please a lot of people on the waiting list. Anyway, that's kind of a long explanation, but we are, you know, very aware of the deadlines and we are obviously going to go back next legislative session to get that uh, extension. And I, I don't really call it an extension. I, I call it really a correction on a, the, not only the start date, but the end date. So it's consistent with Act Two Seventy-Nine.
Any other questions? Oh, I want to, um, Chair, thank you for that explanation and why I think it's important. Um, we have the benefit of taking a deeper dive as commissioners, but the beneficiaries don't necessarily understand what's landing on their tables. So I would agree, there's a vast difference between encumbering and spending down money.
Right.
It's different. So I know the intention was to give us three years, but there was a glitch. And so we want to be able to assure our beneficiaries that we're probably on track to get support from the Senate to take us back to the correction you mentioned. So, thank you. Any other question?
Yeah, I did. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Stuart, can I get back to your spreadsheet? So last month you had proposals A, B, C, and D, and E. So this month you have proposals A, B, C, D, and E, but now they're filled in with, um, with projects subdivisions. Where, where did it come from? I mean, was this from the commission, these proposals? Or did it come from the, just the department?
Thank you for that question. And so, um, in November, uh, the department issued a request for proposals for uh, land and project development. We received, uh, seven proposals. Uh, two of the proposals we deemed to be, um, not acceptable. Excuse me, I think there was three proposals not acceptable. Five were, four were deemed to be acceptable. One was potentially acceptable. So, um, prior to the department accepting these, um, we had not sent out correspondence to the developers. So we could not publicly disclose um, the development agreements or the developers. So what we have done, um, since then is we have notified uh, each developer that we're accepting proposals and that, um, we begin the negotiation and development agreement, uh, process. So that's why names now appear in, um, for proposals with the letters A, B, C, D, and E. And recently.
But you have locations like Waialua in Oahu.
That is, that is correct.
I, I never, where is this at? I never heard of that.
This is a new, this is new acquisition in Waialua, um, near, um, near the sugar mill. Uh, and so we've had to vet through all of the environmental requirements. And so we are receiving developers' best and final offer. And we feel that, um, our issues have been addressed and.
I guess my question is, where did these projects come from? Did, did we, we support these projects, A, B, C, D, and E? Where, where did this come from? Or did it come from the, the department submitted the A to E projects?
That is correct. So they are, um, the proposals were received publicly and then we had a review committee internally in the, in the department, department staff. And then the recommendations were put forward to the chairman.
Which chairman?
This would, uh, would have been Ikaka Anderson.
Okay. I'm still kind of confused.
Commissioner.
Let me, I was going to try to explain that.
If, if I can, um, in the Act Two Seventy-Nine strategic plan that the commission approved in twenty twenty-two, there was a provision in the plan that, um, allowed the department to explore land acquisitions as part of the strategic plan, as in particularly on Oahu because of the shortage of lands. So within the context of that provision in the Act Two Seventy-Nine strategic plan, the department issued an R F P for proposals to look at the possibility of acquiring additional lands from interested landowners wishing to, um, sell their land to the department. So that's the context in which these projects appear.
Okay. Okay. So it's not going to change next month, right, your spreadsheet? These are the projects for twenty twenty-three.
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Aleakidi.
Yeah, I just wanted to add Patty.
Yes, Michael.
So, no, no. When it first came out as A, B, C, D, they did, they couldn't disclose the landowners because it was the R F P, you know, request for proposal. But now that we've progressed through and chose landowners, now we can disclose who they are.
That is, that is correct.
Well, thank you for that. But I, I, I needed to understand the transparency of these properties when it comes to Oahu or whatever island it is, because this is the first time that I've seen Waialua Eva Villages. And so that's, that's a legitimate question to ask from your spreadsheet last month to this month. Who made the decisions? Was it this commission or just the department? And so it's just transparency of where these properties are being purchased and developed for lot development. So thank you for that. Thank you, Michael. Appreciate it.
Okay. Any other question? No, thank you.
Mahalo Commissioners.
Yeah, we did have one, uh, public testimony person requesting to testify, Blossom Fettera.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Chair. Hang on, let me cut something off. Okay, good morning, Commissioner. Mr. Chair, mahalo for the opportunity. Um, after hearing Stuart's, uh, presentation, I think I got my question answered. Uh, my question was concerns about the, um, whether we got the funding cycle resolved and the impact that the, um, uh, the, the concern and impact regarding the maintenance of effort on the six hundred million dollar allocation. But I think Stuart answered most of my concerns and questions. So mahalo.
Thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda, again, the item that was carried over, item G five, the climate change.
Aloha Commissioners, item G five, or information only, a climate change workshop. Um, today I have Nancy McPherson, uh, who is the department's lead on climate change related matters. And also we have, um, a guest presenter that Nancy will introduce.
Mahalo Andrew, aloha, co-commissioners. Day two on, on Molokai. Um, we heard a lot yesterday from beneficiaries about concerns with coastal flooding, sea level rise, heavy rains and erosion. Um, so I'm hoping we can address some of those concerns with some more information as well as some strategies for moving forward and responses by the department. Um, so I'm going to give just a briefly, uh, not a complete thorough hazard analysis, but just a discussion of some of Molokai's climate change vulnerabilities. And then talk a little bit about our current climate change related projects. Then, um, I'm going to hand it over to Amy Wertz, who is the Coastal Lands Program Coordinator at Sea Grant. Um, she is embedded in the Department of Land and Natural Resources Office of Conservation and Coastal Lands, which we call D L N R, O C C L. Um, and she focuses a lot on shoreline erosion and sea level rise. So that should be really helpful, some anticipated impacts, what we, what we can anticipate in the coming years, um, and what we're seeing right now. So, uh, okay, next slide, please. So, um, these are some of the major climate change vulnerabilities that Molokai is facing. Um, sea level rise, uh, there's going to be accelerated shoreline erosion as well as episodic, which means there's going to be high shoreline erosion events. We've already seen several of those over the last five to ten years. Um, it, it's a really complicated explanation of why that's happening. So I'll probably leave that to Amy. Um, but what we're also seeing because of sea level rise is the groundwater lens. Um, the groundwater is actually upwelling. And so we're going to be seeing reemergent springs and wetlands. And as people here on Molokai know very well, the whole coastline is, um, you know, there's even right here, especially at Kalamaula, there's just giant underground rivers of fresh water moving out into the coastal area. There were springs all along this coastline. Some of them still exist. Ola, Ola right down here was a huge spring. Um, there were, I think, six or seven springs just in this area, sacred springs, purposes, different purposes. Um, a lot of that's in our shoreline erosion management plan, if you want to check out that information. But there's also a lot of wetlands. There's a lot of coastal wetlands still on Molokai that haven't been filled. And so they will be, there will be changes there also. Um, so we're also seeing heavy rain events. As you heard yesterday, we're seeing frequent and worse flooding of low-lying areas. And the drainages that were constructed decades and decades ago weren't designed to handle these kinds of, uh, huge volumes of, of stormwater. So, um, we're really going to have to take a serious look at that, as Stuart has talked about with the drainage study. Um, and then another big impact for Molokai is prolonged drought, which we just recently saw, luckily has somewhat ended. Um, but the problem is that all that vegetative growth increases the fuel load. And what happens then is you go into a cycle of heat and drying out. And then you have even higher wildfire danger than you had before. So, um, and the other issue that people I've talked to here are noticing is increased heat, increased humidity. Um, so we're going to be looking at heat, heat impacts as well. Um, so on the upper right of this screen, uh, this is the State Department of Highways. There was a study done by U H on shoreline erosion impacts to state highways. Um, and Molokai has two sections. One is in Kulu'aha and one is in Pu Ko'o. And, uh, but as folks here know, there's several other locations also that are going to need to be addressed. So the coastal highway here, Kamehameha Five Highway is, uh, in danger and is being undermined right now by shoreline erosion. And then that picture on the lower right is, um, in, um, I'm thinking Kamila Loa. And so that's, um, some of the flooding that's been happening along the coast here. Okay, next slide. Um, so this slide just talks a little bit about the wildfire hazards, but, um, one thing that I do have on the last slide are links to more information. And so there are some wonderful portals where you can look up information. This one is state emergency management. It's got active incidents, power outages, hurricane, wind, um, flooding, you know, wildfires, tsunami, earthquake. So, I mean, this is real time stuff. So this one is showing the wildfire, degree of wildfire hazards for Molokai. The red is obviously the highest, uh, danger. And then on the lower right, these are some of the actions that are happening. There's a group here on Molokai that's working on, um, the land, getting the land managers together. Um, unfortunately, I don't think D H L is participating in this yet, but we're going to work on that. And, um, so the idea is to reduce the wildfire risk through vegetation management. Now, just coming in yesterday, I saw how big the Halekoa is getting. It's huge and it's everywhere. And, um, so we're, we're really hoping to figure out, working with others, including Molokai Ranch and County of Maui, um, and, you know, private landowners to reduce this vegetation load. Historically, this has happened in the past. There was a time when there was kiave covering um, all the lands, especially out, out west here. And there was a group effort to clear that and reduce that fire hazard because we all know kiave. And there was a group effort to clear that and reduce that fire hazard, because we all know kiave burns at a much higher temperature. Um, but that's evidently been replaced by Haleko'a, Ko'ahale. So, okay, next slide. Um, so what we can do, ho'oma kaukau. There we go. Um, so that we have the shoreline erosion management plans, so working with land development division, land, also land management division. Um, we need to look at where our low-hanging fruit is. Where are the locations where we can begin implementing the shoreline erosion management plan without huge, you know, permitting issues and, uh, huge investment? And then identify funding sources so that we can start ramping that up. So part of that is doing the community resilience plan, because that makes us eligible for additional, uh, NIFW funding in the future, which can pay for planning, permitting and implementation. Um, we're also coordinating with the County of Maui on implementation of their plan, which is the Molokai Climate Change and Sea Level Adaptation and Resiliency Plan. Um, LDD, Stuart talked about the Molokai Drainage Study, which is really exciting. We, we really wanna make sure that our beneficiaries from those areas are involved, because they have a lot of, uh, lifelong knowledge of how water moves in their hupua. Um, and then finally, looking at land management division and employing B, uh, BMPs to reduce the wildfire hazard, as I just discussed. So, next slide. Um, so there's some, this is, this, it will be posted to the DHL website. So here, there's a state climate summary. Civil Beat actually has a really good in-depth climate change ser- series of articles. So I advise everybody to take a read of those. There's real-time wildfire and drought info. Um, the state has a climate change portal, which has tons and tons of information. There's a state climate commission that DHL has been participating in those meetings. And our, our deputy is, uh, interested in being the DHL representative for that. And then, um, the County of Maui also has an Office of Climate Change Resiliency and Sustainability. So we'd like to engage with them, um, in, moving forward. And, next slide. Um, okay, so I'm hoping Amy is in the waiting room and will be led into the meeting here. So she has her own PowerPoint that she's gonna share with us. Um, she's the coastal, whoops. She's a coastal lands program coordinator, uh, as I mentioned. And she provides scientific and policy support and program coordination support to Office of Conservation and Coastal Lands on issues including improved understanding of coastal processes, mitigation of coastal erosion and other coastal hazards, beach conservation and restoration, appropriate coastal land use, environmental document and regulatory permit reviews, and coastal management policy compliance and development, including inter-agency, which is what she's doing today to help us, and public engagement. So mahalo, Amy, for your kukua.
Thank you, Nancy, for that, for that extensive introduction. Um, is it possible for me to share my screen? No. Could I have access to screen sharing, please? There it is. Okay, um. Are you able all to just see the PowerPoint right now? Yes. Okay, is it in, um, is it in like full screen view for the PowerPoint? Can anyone let me know?
Amy, you're on presenter view. You have to start your.
Oh, it is, it's on a different. Sorry.
Yeah, right there, from beginning.
Yeah, but it's showing on my other screen and it is, alright, let me, I'm so, I'm very sorry. I thought I had this technology piece worked out.
Or you can go to monitor.
I will, um. I'm very sorry. Let me see here. There we go. Okay, now you should be able to see it full screen?
There you go.
Okay, thank you. Apologize for that. Thank you, Nancy, for that introduction. Uh, thank you commissioners and, and all the members present there for having me. As Nancy said, my name is Amy Wertz and I'm an extension agent with the Uni.
Exposure to sea level rise. It's, there was a small group of us that at the end of last year, from the Department of Natural Resources, Hawaii Sea Grant, the Hawaii Climate Commission, and the Coastal Resilience Collaborative at the university, that put together a five-year update to this report as required by law. And that updated report was, um, adopted by the Climate Commission in February. So the first report in 2017 is a very extensive document, about 250 pages. Um, this five-year update is about 32 pages, so a bit more digestible. And with this update, we really aimed to do three things. First was to update the science. The second was to take a record of all of the progress that the state and county agencies have made towards meeting the recommendations made in the 2017 report. And the third is to identify the gaps and areas of focus for the next five years, leading up to a full updated report in, in 2027. So, um, I'll start with the, so the, the 2017 report made nine recommendations. And within those nine recommendations, there were 49 recommended actions. All of which were aimed towards improving the resiliency and adaptation for sea level rise for the state. So the first thing that we did with this, um, updated report, and now it is. There it goes, okay, was to do the scientific updates. Um, and just a few of the key scientific updates that were included in the five-year update is, um, first, that according to the United Nations, um, the world has missed the goal on emissions to hold warming to 1.5 degrees Celsius and is more likely to warm by 2.8 degrees Celsius by the end of the century. Um, given that, uh, it is now known that even if CO2 emissions were to be reduced to zero, we're still going to be seeing sea level rise through the end of the century due to, um, ice cap melt and as well as the, uh, just the overall warming and expansion of the oceans. Um, the scientific data in the sea level rise exposure in the 2017 report were based on the reports from the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change Assessment Report Five. Since then, there has been an assessment report six. And within that, it now identifies that a sea level rise of three to four feet by the year 2100 is a mid-range rather than a high-range, high-end scenario for Hawaii. Um, the sea level rise exposure area that came out of the 2017 report is all based on a 3.2 levels, 3.2-foot sea level rise by the end of the century. Um, just some local data there is that in 2017 and 2020, Honolulu Harbor tide gauge had its highest daily mean water levels in its 112-year history. And also that long-term observational data shows that, um, then, the, and the models coming from that shows that sea level rise will be experienced at 16 to 20% higher than the global average. Um, so one thing that we're able to do and incorporate in this is that there's a lot more local science knowledge rather than just the global means, um, moving forward. So those are kind of the key scientific updates, uh, that we did in the report. The second thing was to account for progress made towards the recommendations made in 2017. So there were those nine recommendations. And on this slide, what you're looking at is a graphical representation of those nine recommendations and 49 recommended action items. Um, an empty bubble means that there's no known progress. A quarter-filled bubble is that they're beginning progress. A half-filled bubble is that there's some progress. And three-quarters of a bubble means that there is significant progress. Um, as you'll see, nothing is completely full, because nothing is completely done. But, uh, the good news is that there has been a lot of progress made towards meeting those recommendations, which also means increasing, increasing the resiliency of Hawaii and the readiness for sea level rise. Uh, so a few of those, the key accomplishments that have been made are in the areas of planning and in guidance for planning agencies for adapting to sea level rise. These are just a few, um, examples here. Won't spend too much time on them. Um, and as part of this process of going through and accounting for what has been accomplished, we went up to an inter-agency review. Um, Nancy gave us information on things that have been accomplished by DHL, for example. And all the state agencies and counties had all of their accomplishments are accounted for in this plan. So, as we went through and looked at what has been done, a key thing that we also wanted to identify is what are the recommended areas for focus in the next five years that will help us to fill in the gaps of accomplishments that have not yet been achieved? And so these are listed here along with their, um, associated recommendations from the 2017 and then some new ones from the 2022 report. Um, facilitating inter-agency coordination for holistic adaptation planning, uh, conserving and adapting native Hawaiian cultural resources and sites, integrating equity and justice considerations into vulnerability assessments, adaptation planning and actions, addressing and stopping the loss of shoreline access, integrating economic valuation of ecosystem co-benefits of natural resources into planning and actions, making managed retreat viable option, and implementing a phased adaptation to sea level rise. So, um, one of the things that you may have noticed on that first accounting slide that did not have a lot of progress was preserving native Hawaiian culture and communities with sea level rise. Um, the one item that has a, a sliver of a bubble filled there is developing the archipelagic-wide inventory of native Hawaiian cultural resources and practices impacted by sea level rise. And that is the Office of Hawaiian Affairs Kapuka Database, which is a geographical information system that has some accounting for Hawaiian land culture and history right now. Um, but there's a lot of work to be done in this realm. And also, this is the one area which specifically names the Department of Hawaiian Homelands in one of the recommended action items, which is in developing adaptation plans to preserve access to coastal lands and water within native Hawaiian communities with sea level rise. Um, and you can, I just put the additional information there of what that recommended action was, was, um, for DHL OHA Haumoku Councils to work with native Hawaiian communities to develop adaptation plans to preserve access to coastal lands and water. So that was that specific. One which is, has been identified as something to carry forward and to be a greater area of focus in the next five years. Um, so I just very quickly want to go through what the new recommendations were that were made with this report. And then, uh, even more quickly, the updated recommendations, um, to leave some time for questions. So the biggest recommendation was that a full update of the Sea Level Rise Vulnerability and Adaptation Report be done in 2027 to do a, a full undertaking. This was just an interim report. Um, and along with that is identifying a new generation of the Sea Level Rise Viewer, which will include more dynamic informa- more dynamic data to show, um, not just kind of passive flooding and a, what's called a bathtub model, which is kind of static flooding, but to actually show it in a more dynamic way. Um, a centralized tracking system to coordinate the efforts so that we don't in five years have to collect it all again. We can collect that as we go forward, um, continuing to identify what those unmet needs are and doing a more detailed vulnerability assessment within the SLAREXA. Um, and then our big other recommendation was to keep identifying the gaps in progress since 2017. Um, so just as a reminder, this was what the progress looks like so far. And, uh, uh, as was also identified in kind of those key accomplishments, a lot of the work has been done on the planning. And there is, um, a lot of room for implementation and a lot more community engagement and information sharing as well. Um, so I'm just gonna go, I won't go through all of these in detail. I'm just gonna hit a few of the, the large, the more important ones, I think. And, um, we'll note that as I've listened to some of the presentations over the last, um, day and this morning, that, um, DHL has a lot of land management responsibilities that crosses over with a lot of these recommendations as well. And, um, we look forward to working together to help to address this, to make all of our communities more resilient moving forward. Um, so the first thing, which I think it's, it's, it's a key, is recognizing the sea level rise exposure area as an exposure zone rather than a vulnerability zone. Because, um, we really want in the next report to be accounting for vulnerability as a factor of exposure, sensitivity to exposure, and the ability of the community to adapt. So the capacity for adaptation is really what vulnerability rather than just exposure is. So right now, with the, with the sea level rise exposure area, what we see is the exposure and helping to broaden that, which means bringing in more information about community vulnerability that exists and, and adaptive capacity. Um, also of revising the planning benchmark as a four-foot minimum for all planning and a six-foot benchmark for, uh, infra- for a public infrastructure. Um, those are just benchmarks, not anything that's set in policy at this point. Um, but just recognizing that there has been increased likelihood of higher-level flooding by the end of the century. And, um, the other two there, moving forward with, um, managed retreat studies as well as doing more long-term strategic planning for repair maintenance of the critical infrastructure that's in that exposure area now in advance of the need so that it is not emergencies as those things come up. Um. So, this one is, so urban redevelopment, um, a lot of these are just small updates into there. I'm gonna go through these quickly to not take up too much time. Um, incentivizing improved flood risk management. I'm looking at something like the constraint districts that were just put into place on Kauai for planning to improve those guidelines and help to gain greater access to FEMA flooding, or not FEMA flooding, to FEMA funding to help to address, uh, flooding needs. Um, enabling beaches to persist with sea level rise. The big change here was just taking the word legacy out, because we don't actually have a definition for what a legacy beaches. And just recognizing that all of our beaches are important, both as a cultural resource and as an added layer of resiliency to sea level rise in that buffer area there. Um, and just exploring more ways to help move people back off of those vulnerable exposed areas as we need, you know, as sea level rises. Um, this is, has, has to do with, I heard yesterday about the cesspools, but helping to, um, support research and development to create affordable alternatives for cesspools in shoreline areas to help to improve that nearshore water quality. And then setting up the clear policy and regulatory guidance for on- onsite sewage disposal systems as well to help with public health and water quality. Um. This updated recommendation also has to do with the, uh, sustainable financing and incentives to help us adapt and move back off of the shoreline. And then the, the final one is just promoting this collaboration accountability for adapting to sea level rise and helping to incorporate the community scale vulnerability assessments and adaptation planning into the, into the major, into the, to the big update in 2027, um, to really, that seemed to getting down at that community level and not just looking statewide. Um, and in helping to improve the coordination between all the state and county agencies and, um, also increasing capacity to enforce existing laws and regulations as well as policies and helping, uh, the, the general public to understand, um, why these things are in place. Um, so then finally, as the next steps, uh, we are looking into the summertime to host a staff-level workshop or to begin a series of workshops to help discuss the report and the actions for all the agencies going forward to help build that collaborative process that we, um, identified as an area for focus as well as, um, supporting the ongoing research modeling and monitoring of sea level rise impacts to help to better inform the updates to the Sea Level Rise Viewer that will be coming out, maybe rolling out slowly in the next five years, um, to be fully in place in 2027. And I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you. And I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Amy, I have a question, actually. Chair, may I? I'm sorry. What do you anticipate, the direction that things are going as far as the state, all the state agencies with Kulianna for the development in the shoreline and natural resources and cultural resources, as well as the counties and communities? Because it seems like a lot of communities are having to take this burden on themselves and are feeling a little overwhelmed by it. And do you think that government is moving well to coordinate and bring the resources to bear on this challenge? Because it's gonna take overcoming silos and not being territorial about things. And so I'm just really hoping that D H H L can be a part of this effort.
Yes, thank you, Nancy. That is part of our, our goal with hosting that series of workshops with the agencies to try to find the places where there are state and county agencies and community groups that are already working towards the same goals and might not even know it yet. So hoping to try to coordinate that and bring all of the voices to the table to amplify each other and to work forward. I know that the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development Coastal Zone Management Program has some legislation that's pending right now in the legislature to fund further standardized vulnerability assessments across the state, beginning with state infrastructure, but setting up a framework that would be applicable to private infrastructure as well for, for homeowners and for everybody. So I, I do, I do think so, partly because I'm an, I'm an optimist, but also between the, the goal that we have of doing this focus groups and also using the, the coordinated working group under the Ocean Resources Management Plan as well to try to focus these efforts forward to help with the community planning and have that informing the state planning, sort of in a reciprocal, right? Us helping to provide the information, the communities identifying their way forward and what they needs. And then those things can be integrated together. I hope that answers your question, Nancy.
Missions, any questions? Not, we do have one testifier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, real quick. Mine is just a quote. I, I think, Nancy, what your question is, I, I, I truly feel that D H H, D H H L's responsibility, Kulianna, is on the sea level rise for our beneficiaries. Period. It is their Kulianna and the state of Hawaii to really take a look at our, our lots and our beneficiary lands that are around the, near the ocean rise. And so it is our Kulianna. Thank you.
We do have one public testimony. Did you honor Commissioner Wong?
Thank you, Chair. I would agree with Commissioner Turuia. And you know, when I listen to these presentations, collection of more data, you know, all, all we're collecting is data that indicates the dire condition that we are living in today. And, and when I hear adaptive strategies, some of what Nancy points out, it, it's really laid upon the shoulders of communities when this is really the result of a global problem. And so, you know, being here on Molokai today, you know, walking along the shoreline, looking at the homes. You know, I'm, I guess for me, I, I, I'm very concerned about the impact this will have on our beneficiaries. And what I'm not hearing from the department is, I hear mitigation strategies that in my mind is just putting off the inevitable where our homes will be inundated or our freshwater lands will rise above the ground and, and it'll be a combination of sea level rise affecting properties as well as freshwater coming up through the ground and inundating our lots. So what I'm not hearing from the department is a serious discussion about Plan B. And the unfortunate reality of Plan B really is relocation. And we need to start thinking about that now, today. And we, you know, we talk about native Hawaiian planting along the shoreline. You know, that, that's a stopgap, but it's not going to. We have glacial melt, we have thermal expansion of our oceans. It's coming and we need to do more. So that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Public testimony, Walter, ready?
Are we on G agendas?
Hey, Walter, are you?
Are we on G agenda? Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yes, um, the hardest hit area was Kapakia. And it didn't come from the ocean, it came from the mountain. And it flooded mud. People couldn't even drive across the highway. So the solution was the Kapakia community got together and they convinced the mayor to put some effort into stopping all that mud from coming down from the, from the mountains. And he committed and sent his public works director to meet. And they have decided that they're gonna help by, number one, slowing down the waters coming from the mountain. Number two, diverting that water into a basin and create a spillway so that the water would slow down by going into the basin. The mud would settle down into the basin and then the clean water would get into the ocean. So not only is the ocean coming from and coming on the land, but the land is going into ocean and killing our reefs. So it's a double edged sword that we gotta deal with. So I'm here to say that what's missing is a commitment from the department to join the county in trying to, to create this solution along with the community. The community is also gonna go up there and make small little dams to help slow down the water. So they're meeting and they wanna come up with a solution. And I'm here to say that hopefully the department will join the county and use some of their equipment to come up with a solution.
Commissioner Helm?
No, I echo what Walter is saying, you know. It was discussed, the subject was discussed yesterday. So hopefully the department will move forward to, to make all the efforts possible to do some assessments on the Maoka side of Kapakia, getting the approval of the E C to go into that property and start doing an assessment. And hopefully they could not so much divert the, the stream bed, but to figure out what's the best remedy to stop the amount of flooding that has been occurring. But we haven't had a storm like this since twenty two thousand and two. Wow. That was the last time, that's what, twenty years ago? So.
Wow.
I think it's coming, it's coming. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that without a doubt, it's coming. So I, idea of working on it. That's a great idea. Commissioner Helm and several of us drove around, we looked at the area, the silt that is accumulated. And I was asking Commissioner Helm, isn't that good soil? It's just sitting there. So one of the ideas was for homesteaders, help yourself, take it to your lot and, you know, use it. I mean, why, why just dispose of it? So maybe we can get some kind of program, at least at that for the existing situation, to resolve it in a very beneficial way. But long term, it is coming. It's really spooky when you think about it in less than seventy-five years, the ocean has risen three to four feet. And that's pretty major. So relocation, obviously that's one solution. But during that seventy-five years, I'm sure it's gonna be very difficult to just say relocate. It's gonna be a transitional process that we gotta kind of phase in. But you're right, we do have to have a plan, a Plan B. Where are we gonna relocate these individuals? What interim steps are we gonna take immediately? If we can divert some of the, you know, excessive runoff and use it in a beneficial way, that'd be great. But it's an ongoing and then inevitable situation that we're gonna have to deal with. Any other questions? Thank you.
Mahalo Commissioners, mahalo Amy.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, now to the public testimony. Let's see, the first one we have is Makahoa.
Aloha Board of Commissioners, State of Hawaii Assistants, and aloha beneficiaries. Anyone who's on the lease is no longer a beneficiary. It's those who are waiting on the list that is our current beneficiaries. So I'm here as the kingdom's subject. Born in nineteen seventy-one, I applied for homestead in two thousand, which is twenty-three years ago. My understanding as a kingdom of the subject is we have two hundred acres that has been placed in the trust of farmer, former crown lands. Meaning that not only are we rural subjects, but we have been living on crown lands. Our crown lands consisted of four point five million acres of the Kingdom of Hawaii to all subjects or tenants of Ano, Alodeo, or ancestral inheritance. So I come before you today as a subject of the Hawaiian Kingdom to just give you a little background of how Hawaiian Homestead Act was developed in nineteen twenty. It was accepted in nineteen twenty-one. And in nineteen twenty-three, there was twenty kingdom subjects from all islands throughout the districts who was brought here to Molokai and settled right behind us at this settlement called Kalani Anaole Settlement. Remembering, Kuhio passed in nineteen twenty-four. So from nineteen twenty-four till now, it was under a commission. So my tutu man, who is William Pua'oi, was awarded a lot here where the old garbage dump was in Kalama'ula. Unfortunately, during the flood of nineteen twenty-four, twenty-five, Kalama'ula homesteaders was relocated. There were some families who remained in this settlement and the rest was allocated lots up in Ho'olehua. The second homestead lands prepared for all the Hawaiians in the kingdom on the less stricken, arid lands that we had left. Once again, two hundred thousand acres. Here on Molokai, we have thirty-three in our invent, thirty-three thousand in our inventory. So throughout the rest of the state, the remainder of two hundred acres are also part of the trust. So from this trust as beneficiaries, any monies from this trust should be allocated to beneficiaries, being that it's been a hundred and two years. So I would suggest that waitlisters receive, yeah, housing vouchers or rental assistance before any development goes on. So my knowledge is in nineteen ninety-five. Nineteen ninety-five, after President Clinton apologized to the kingdom in nineteen ninety-three, the state woke up, smelled the poor Kenny Kenny and started doing the fast process of allotting awards. So my mother, who is Rochelle Mai Kui, became a wait, a waitlister for one year. We moved to Molokai in eighty-one, she applied in eighty-five, received her lot in eighty-six. Unfortunately, she was part of the homesteaders who had to wait almost seventeen years until infrastructure or even development and planning, what we're doing today, occurs promising one hun, one thousand eleven homes in their twenty eighteen plans. Projecting five years of completing all those programs that today they're extending the development of these plans to occur the six hundred mil in the two, in the six hundred million from the two seventy-nine act. So as a waitlister, I feel as if something should be done today, just like Auntie Patty Turuia mentioned. We can go on and we can plan and develop and who's paying the salaries? Is it coming out of the trust or is it coming out of the investments? So investments is when others take on general leases to our trust and then they go into stocks or bonds. And then the state is able to receive that and do whatever they want. So I'm here to stop all of this because I'm fifty-one. I've been on the year, on the list for twenty-three years. I grew up on Papukalea Homestead. My father is Eugene Helekahi. And he originate from Wa'e'u Maui. So Tutu man comes to Honolulu to, you know, go into the business realm of things. And Honolulu was the only place that have, never have laws and restrictions for drinking, prostitution and all of that. So when you research your grandpa and you find him in Honolulu, it's just because he's trying to evolve into this capitalist world. So America kind of came to Hawaii in the form of urbanizing, urbanizing places, right? Pushing people out and taking over and creating a territory into a state. So until all my Board of Trustees here, who is responsible for the trust, is able to fulfill the trust by, I cannot be a beneficiary no more. I wanna benefit. Yeah, I need to benefit. You can wait till I wahala and then somebody away, no more offspring. You know, like, are you thinking of that? Are you guys taking that into consideration? You know, because after a hundred and two years, me as a subject identifies, it's not working. We have over here people, yeah, waiting, or they already have their aina. And then you have people like me, it's more than fifty, I'm more than fifty. Is there not a priority? Or let me remind you about Orientals. Okay, I was Hawaiian raised up, thinking about Orientals. Yeah, and I, I went to America and I told them about Oriental and they was like, what is Oriental? They said, that's not a culture. I say, well, I'm influenced by Orientals being in the kingdom. And the only thing that relates me to that was Oriental trading. So commerce came with the white man and they traded Chinese. Yeah, they brought them into our kingdom as immigrants and at-will tenant. And any at-will tenants could be disposed of from these islands. So today is all this quarter or part Hawaiians who is talking on behalf of people like subjects. And then as I look at the laws, it says that USA reports to the department now. And prior to that, the department reported to the commissioners. So when I have you guys all over here, it just doesn't seem as we report to you guys. It's like you guys should be reporting to us whether we have housing vouchers. You know, like, if you can't get us off the list today, we can get vouchers for our housing. You know, everybody on the twenty-nine thousand list is low income. Yeah, and then you guys wanna develop leases. Well, leases wasn't about the kingdom, it was to allot us lands. Yeah, so we can feel like we have a place. Because the land fell from the heaven, yeah, without kala. The water came from the heaven without kala. And all this development is why we gotta put kala for make the maintenance of your pipes or straws that go through our lois, our ponds, our lava tubes. Yeah, all the way up to Wa'ha now. Yeah, in Hawaiian, it means the birth of water. And who's over there now? The national park. Who was over there before? Our people. Yeah, and today only get one section of Kalau Papa under crown lands. There's portions of crown lands missing from Ho'olehua. Are they making profits somewhere and just putting back the thirty? Because my understanding is thirty times twenty is six hundred mil. And if you say it's allocated from the legislature, well, that- well, the legislature should be at least allocating 30% of revenues from the 4.5 mil. That's my understanding as a subject of the Kingdom. Do you have any questions?
No. We appreciate your testimony.
It's not just a testimony. I am here with Ma'ukupuna. Yeah, for the 200 acres of former crown lands of the 4.5 mil that you guys are responsible for, yeah, administering and allocating land. We're not asking for lease, loans, or mortgages. That's American. That is all American. So today, all us broke Hawaiians sit before you, yeah, for 102 years and ask, can you guys just do what is right? Yeah, all I want to ask is stop development, cut checks off at the 600 mil, and next year go and get more. Because it's about time that we start allocating responsibilities of the Kingdom. Any questions? Okay, so you guys understand what the trust is? The trust, the trust, yeah, you have a settler. Who was the settler?
Sir Makahoa.
It's not sir, I don't need a pronoun, mahalo and thank you.
Yeah, but you've already made your comments.
Do I have a time?
Do you have any testimony concerning?
That is my testimony.
Items on the agenda, if not, thank you. We have 16 other, or 15 other people.
Okay, well, as long as you heard, mahalo.
Thank you. Okay, the next person, Bridget Mawat.
And you have to unmute. Okay, I'll come back to you. Okay, try now, try now. Okay, I'll come back to you.
Okay, the next person, Pat Va'ila.
Uncle Pat.
Can I?
Okay, go ahead.
Connectivity on the homestead, that's the issue, another issue that we're having, so I'm sorry. Good morning Chair. Deputy Members, Honorable Members of the Commission. My name is, excuse me. My name is Pat Kahawai'ala. I'm the president, the current president of the Keokah Community Association. Please, I come, I'm sorry for the last minute submission, my testimony. And the matter has to do, I've sent all of you a document, again, it's late, but it deals with a beneficiary who received an award in 2006, '07 with a water line placed in the middle of the driveway. The explanation I've got from Homestead Services in Mr. Juan Garcia was that these people, these beneficiaries, these awardees, signed a document without prejudice. So they're stuck with a water line in the middle of the driveway. I believe that's, that is truly truly not, what is, what is, needs to be done is who oversaw this work being done. At the time it was being done, the home was built by a contractor that Department of Hawaiian Homes had, came from Eva Beach. I even had the water, excuse me, the engineer from the water department say, well, hey, you know, that's where the water line was, and they built a driveway. Well, I looked at it, the driveway was there before they put the water meter in. So who gets to oversee and make sure our beneficiaries, in this case, get to have proper proper help with their, help with their occupancy of this province? So I do have, I do, that is my serious concern on this, about this issue I brought to you. But on the other, on another matter that I am truly hurtful is that as we are the second homestead, today you're on the island of the Kupuna Aina Ho'opulupula. Molokai, the first homestead established, settled. We happen to be the second. We had 61 people that came, and I need everybody to understand clearly, including the commissions. 100 years ago, this was a pilot project, a pilot project. It appears that we may, we were set up for failure from the beginning. However, through the resourcefulness of our Kupuna that I stand on their shoulders today, who are the Kahua, they proved everybody wrong, everyone wrong. So 103 years later, we exist as native Hawaiian beneficiaries. And that's due respect to all the previous speaker. Beneficiaries happens to be the individual who derives something from a trust. That's who we are. We are beneficiaries of the trust, whether you on the waitlist or whether you on the land right now. There are 20,000 of our beneficiaries on the waitlist, and I'm hoping that I can share the optimism of you, Mr. Chair, when you're saying you're going to go back next year to the to the legislation and correct that what you believe is the incorrectness of Act 279, and in this case, the timeframe. Unfortunately, I don't share your optimism in that we now have to go back and deal with elected officials again. And that bothers me when we're putting our faith, everything on elected commission, elected officials. When the power, the power lies within the nine, eight or nine of you that sit at that table, not the staff. It bothered me when I heard that that it's the staff that goes and creates these RFPs and then bring it back as Commissioner Terua was concerned. That is the concern that I have. Who makes this decision? The staff puts it together, they go sit down, and then bring to you. It should be you, the commissioners, driving it. You drive it. They bring to you, and then you guys drive, drive the staff. It is not the other way. It's not the dog, the tail wagging the dog. Commissioners, you the dogs. Do not let the tail wag you. So we, and again, with due respect to Nancy and Amy that was there sharing their monofa for climate change. The impassioned plea from Commissioner Awol. With due respect, when we have these monthly meetings, we have these monthly meetings once a month in communities, native Hawaiian communities, and we have a lot of issues. So I am, I am truly, I don't know who puts the agenda item together. We should be making sure that we take care of the beneficiary, their concerns, what they, what they want to have done. I cannot sit here to tell you that it's right or wrong about the climate change. It's here, it is global. It's out of our control. We just happen to be an island nation, and therefore, we are going to be truly impacted by O'Pala, by the environmental, the wastewater. We are truly impacted with that. So that being said, I want to again thank the commissioners for allowing me this opportunity, but I surely want some oversight in homes being built. 279, again with Mr. Chair. Your idea of a, as being a developer now, you've said it, you advocated that since you got, during your hearings, that I hope it is not ever your intention to build a home, give it to a native Hawaiian who qualify, and then tell them, since you signed the paper without prejudice, that's your problem. It is, it is, it is what it is. That's what I got from Mr. Garcia in his actions to the family. And that bothers me to the core. So I again thank all of you for being there from the island of Molokai, mahalo, for allowing us as the Kupuna Ho'opulupula. You are, and they are, the foundation that we look at this Aina Ho'opulupula and what Kohio wanted, what Jonah Weiss wanted, and how they got this thing passed as non-voting members of Congress. If we think, just think like that, then we're not going to be, no more, no more about we get the land, no more the infrastructure. I can pass the land to my beneficiaries now without infrastructure. Ano can pass nothing to them if I sit on the waitlist. I will leave this when, to say Stuart Matsunaga gave you a report on, and that's what I think that got me where. We have so much land on this island. We thinking of buying 120 acres more for $2.5 million when we get 1,800 acres sitting right here for that can be used for all people. So I don't know, maybe because I old now, but I'm a product of the homestead. I'm an advocate on the homestead, and I will be there till I die. Being from Keokah, I'm the kind of guy that believe go go till I'm makin'. So thank you again for allowing me this opportunity, but I surely would want the actions to be taken care of for the Kauai'ana in making sure, at least give them a reasonable explanation, but do not just say because you sign a paper. That being said, again, mahalo all of you, and wish you the best the rest of this day on the island of Molokai. Aloha.
Okay, thank you, Pat. Next witness, DeGray Vanderbilt.
Hello.
Hi DeGray, we can hear you.
Yeah, aloha.
Aloha.
Hello Commissioners. My name is DeGray Vanderbilt. I'm a longtime resident of Molokai since 1979, and in recent years moved over to Maui with my partner of 33 years Valerie Munson, I'm moving on to 82. And so we're kind of helping each other through these later years right now. I'm a founding member of Kalapapa'ana and also working on the Kalapapa Memorial as the compliance and legislative coordinator. I'm here speaking for myself today, but I wanted to speak on a couple of issues about Kalapapa and some serious things that are coming to a head down there. One of them is what is called a transitional team that's in place right now. And I'm reading from a cooperative agreement between MPS and the Department of Health. The Department of Health is in charge of administering at Kalapapa until there's no longer any patients, and then it's going to be transitioned over. And NPS really presumes that they're going to be in charge of where things go from there, which I think is contrary to a lot of top-side beneficiaries and certainly some of the Molokai patients. And, but it says that the service and the department agreed to form a transition committee whose responsibility will be orderly transfer and maintenance of program functions. Not sure what program functions means. But this committee was formed with NPS and DOH, and they changed the name to the Kalapapa Interagency Transition Committee. And I don't think that was intended. So all that's on this committee are a few state agencies and two federal agencies, and no top-side beneficiary representatives from native Hawaiian organizations up there or native Hawaiian organizations on, at Kalapapa, including Ka'ohano Kalapapa, which is an organization conceived by the patients and made up of patient residents, descendants, and longtime friends of the community. Now, this transition team has been meeting since, I think, 2016. They've had 30 meetings. The meetings are not recorded. They have no notes, no minutes. They reach no conclusions, and they have to come to some real hard decisions real quick because they kick in when there's no longer a patient community. And today I'm testifying with a heavy heart because of good friend of mine at Kalapapa, Ivy Kahiliheva, who is the wife of Ka'ohano's past president, Boogie Kahiliheva that passed away. She died, bringing the number of people that have the right to live at Kalapapa down to eight. The average age is 87. So there's got to be some decisions made, and I just think that this transition committee needs to have some top-side beneficiaries on it and some some, somebody from Kalapapa, some group down there such as Ka'ohano Kalapapa that can give some real input instead of just federal and state agencies. And and I think what, the other thing I wanted to talk about was community engagement. And we have a new NPS superintendent down there that, in my opinion, and I think in the opinion of many top-side beneficiaries, is really eroded the concept of community engagement to the point where something needs to be done. And anyway, I, 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 I hope that something can be done, and I would like to suggest that maybe there was some mention of the Kalapapa Beneficiary Working Group that was formed by the commission. And I would hope that maybe at the next meeting, Nancy Holman, the new superintendent of NPS, could be invited in the meeting dedicated to finding out where they're coming from on community engagement and try to straighten that out. And also get an idea of what they think their role is when there's no longer a patient community. Are they, do they think they're going to dictate the way things are meant to go? And I would like to just mention that in one of these transition group meetings, DHL's update was that staff is meeting with DHL's update was that staff is meeting with beneficiary groups. Uh, and they will request approval from DOH to contact in-person meetings in the settlement with beneficiaries that are residents of Kalapapa. And, but what they're talking about is NPS workers that are beneficiaries. But I think what needs to be recognized is, and I hopefully the commission could address this today, that the patient residents down there are native Hawaiian beneficiaries by the very definition of what a beneficiary, who a beneficiary is based on, um, DHL's own beneficiary consultation party, uh, policy. And those that are included as beneficiaries or existing lessees, applicants on the waiting list and native Hawaiians who have not applied for a homestead award. Ninety percent of those sent to Kalapapa who sacrificed their lives for the benefit of others are native Hawaiians. And I, I would hope today, maybe the commission could just give their indication of whether or not they feel that those native Hawaiians who sacrificed so much are actually, in their minds, uh, native Hawaiian of beneficiaries. And, uh, so with that, um, I will, um, just say thank you for letting me testify. Uh, uh, and, um, a lot is going on in Kalapapa. It's got a wonderful future ahead and we hope that, uh, the legacy of what the native Hawaiians are envisioning for Kalapapa will remain and not be taken over by some outside groups. So thank you very much for, uh, allowing me this opportunity to testify.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vanderbilt. Uh, we appreciate your concern for Kalapapa and your dedication and commitment to making it a, you know, have a future that we can, uh, not only, uh, remember it, but, uh, preserve it in a way that people can learn about it. But thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the next, uh, testifier is Bridget Moat. Okay, uh, next one is Aina Aloha, it's Kipione.
Aloha.
Aloha.
Uh-huh. Um, aloha Chairman, aloha Commissioners and aloha Eko Molokai. Um, I'm Aina Aloha Yoane and I'm here today to, um, give an update and share where we are as a Maha community. Um, and in our forward movement towards the settlement plan and the Kuliana homesteading of Kings Landing. Um, I'm very thankful to the planning department and all of our, uh, forward progressive movement. We have been meeting with the planning department pretty much every month since the beginning of this year. And it has really uplifted our community because for over forty years now, we have been, uh, shrouded with insecurity of security issues, uh, in Kings Landing and, uh, in preserving our Aina Pula Pula for our Ha'na'oh for our Kiki, for the generations to come. And so I really like to say thank you to, um, Julie and to Andrew in the planning department, um, for our collaboration towards our settlement plan and our future Kuliana homesteading of Kings Landing. Uh, I'm here today to, you know, have a leupai pai to support and koko' our land management division and Kahana Albinio, uh, in helping us, uh, really secure, uh, Kings Landing. Since for the past two years, our gates at Kings Landing have been left open, which forces the county, uh, park gate of Lehiya to be left open. So we have two gates that are open twenty-four hours a day. And, uh, it allows continuous access into our front county park and then continued into Kings Landing. Um, and this has proven to become really overwhelming for our community as we, uh, see a continuous influx, uh, of people into our Aina Pula Pula of Kings Landing. Last year, December, uh, before Chairman Aila, um, retired, we had a meeting with our county, uh, officials to begin the process of removing the non-Maha, uh, peoples from Kings Landing. But I understand that there has been a lot of administrative turnover and that we are waiting patiently for new people to secure their position so that we can continue on in this discussion. Um, Kahana has been working hard on our MOUs, one with the County of Hawaii to secure a gate and then one with, um, other county officials to help us with removal of non-Maha people from in Kings Landing. Maha signed its right of entry at the ending of two thousand and two in November. Um, and so Maha has the authority to manage the lands of Kings Landing while it's going to its settlement plan. However, we have a continued influx of non-Maha people into Kings Landing, uh, that are not covered under our MOU that we, uh, really need help with removing so that we can continue to best manage the Aina in Kings Landing. Um, and so, uh, please koko' our land management division and Kahana Albinio in our continuous, um, movement forward for our law way and for our Maha community. Mahalo and Dad would like to jump on. Papa, are you here? I know, I know he's here.
Thank you very much.
Uh, hello.
Our next witness will be Cora Schnackenberg.
Oh, I think, I think Dad was gonna jump on as part of our testimony. He is, he's here. Dad, can you unmute yourself? I see his phone. Oh, okay, um, I don't wanna hold up anybody. I will call him and see if he can jump on after the next testifier.
Thank you very much. Hey, Cora. Uh, this is a janitor.
We're starting the janitor.
Oh, good, good. There's the first one up.
Okay, uh, aloha everyone again. I promise gonna be short. Um, Chair, this is for you. Come, come to ya, please. This is for you and, uh,
Yeah. Assistant or, excuse me, again, my name is Cora Schnackenberg for the record. I am a former president of Ahanui Homestead Association. And I'm also the Moloka representative of Association of Hawaiian Homeland's Lands. It's also known as Ha. Um, uh, and, um, I just wanted to, um, share with you, um, Chair, cuz this guy's heard my spill. But, um, I have learned a lot from two thousand and nineteen to this current time. Um, not only have I learned a lot, but we had started with a lot of, um, eighty-four uh, waitlisters that are part of the association. And out of the eighty-four, three had passed on the waiting list. And so, forgive me, I got emotion. Um, so what I've learned, Chair and Commissioners, and this, in developing, um, this, uh, in helping in developing this project on Molokai is that the waitlisters did a lot of work. And I think Chair, you mentioned that you folks had no employment. And a hundred years went by. But our people, because no one's gonna save us, right? We take initiative. And so people like association like Pa'upena, Kahiki Nui and, uh, Naeva. Now, Naeva and Kalama'ula, they are accelerated programs back in nineteen eighty-six. And why only now? So my passion among others, uh, waitlisters came about back in two thousand and eighteen when we saw homeless on Molokai. They were in the beach, they were living in the vehicles. Multi families lived under a roof. And mine, it was COVID. So a lot of germs kept spreading amongst themselves. And a high unemployment rates. And not to mention the generational of trauma among our families on Molokai. So what does that all mean? That means that we never wait. A few of our people got together, the kupuna said, you know what? What is the best they can do? They don't have money, off the grid, something that they, our people could afford. In two thousand and five, Chair, on the island plan, Molokai Island Plan, back in two thousand and five, they were originally going to do a residential. In the residential, there are two contractors that did preliminary studies. In the preliminary studies, the contractors, they call them my, the contractors were G seventy. So they know, they know the island G seventy. They got history and S, and SMS, I believe. In those studies, the recommendations were, and I'm just gonna highlight cuz I know like take too much. You guys go a long day today. Uh, uh, in that study, it says this, that the, the, the homesteaders already, they got their blessing, they got their holiday, they got their land. They wasn't able to make ends meet. They still depended on subsistence, living, going hunting, go fishing. You know, they needed to add more into their income or just, just eat. And so the other recommendations was off the grid. Now, there was problems with water and all that, but you know what? I think a lot of the earlier, um, earlier generation, they're more smart, they're more Akamai about, about the act and all that. But nevertheless, moving forward, um, so this is what was happening. And so, um, so this is where with all of this, working hand in hand with the department, you know, and, and trusting, trusting the department to do right by the people. Why we don't trust the department? Because of generational trauma about mistrust. And so a lot of this association, not only do they do the job, but when they need money, guess what they gotta do? They gotta go and go apply, grant. And this is the very people that bust their booty on making things happen for our people on the waitlist. And so to me, we get Pa'upena for an example, twenty years of, of going back and forth and trying to get things happening. But you know what, moving forward, I just wanted to highlight these association that put the time and energy in helping other people that are on the waitlist. The other thing that I've learned in all of this is that identifying the, uh, worthies at the very get-go. You know why? You can get buy-in. Our people on the waitlist gonna be excited when you say, hey, guess what? You have an opportunity. Are you interested? They're gonna be excited and they're gonna be invested in working partnership with you folks. That's what I wanna learn through this.
Okay, I think I got.
I'm sorry, okay. And then the other thing is that, um, so yeah, they will be excited to be part of the, and invested. And they don't need guess, after all of this, they don't need guess, oh, am I gonna get this or what? You know, twiddling their thumbs. Anyway, this, and then the other thing I wanted to say, Chair, one important one. You know, you trust the land in inventory, you trust them. Guess what? Ahanui, that was a good, um, information that I did in G seventy. It will show you all the archaeologists, right? It's beautiful, it's educational for our people. But one thing I wanted to say is that you gotta screen these homes that you folks are exchanging, swapping, whatever is happening behind closed doors. It is very important because it's not suitable. We had an idea about putting a hundred seventy-five people. Went down to thirty, I'm still happy. Because it might not be me, but it gonna be someone else that are Hawaiian ancestry and they get to get their own, uh, land. So I'm excited for them, but out of four hundred acres, Chair, only thirty because the screening of the land, no one did they do diligently. Maybe we getting screwed, maybe the good land has been given away and they swapping, giving us a junk land. I don't know, but you in this position to find out, right? Anyway, so moving forward, we went through a lot since two thousand and eighteen to now. It's in the hands of our commissioners. You get to decide commissioner. Do the thirty goes on this hall, uh, on this Aina or not. But I'm gonna tell you what, our, 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 um, waitlisters, not only waitlisters, part of the community as well. So this is, I knew we got invited to sit in and to engage with community meetings. And we're gonna do that because we wanna move on and look at food sovereignty. The only place to get water, to be quite honest, out of all you folks parcel in your map is Ualapue. So as far as food sovereignty, that is something that our Ahanui is wanting to, moving forward with the community and community gardening. Um, if you haven't seen, you gotta go take a look. The Molokai Community Club did an awesome job in, um, in Manai, in their food gardening, uh, community gardening. Beautiful. Um, the other thing that we're looking at is, is safety. Right now, you know your watershed, right now, when there is an evacuation, that's where our Manai people is going. They're walking out there and that's where they stay when, when there's hurricane or, or a big storm. And so I just wanted to share that many of our people go up there for safety. And the school is right below, so that would be a good evacuation spot. The last one is ner- restoration. So we talk about restore, restoring our Aina, right? Well, guess what? We had, uh, a community member that had donated, oh my, no, no, this is next, but my net donated. They had allowed us, Ahanui, for the purpose of gathering native plants as a nursery. Use their five acres as a nursery for the purpose of Ualapue for the people. And that's not for, for sale, that's to give, to restore the Aina. So with all of that, I wanted to say, that is what I wanna learn in this journey since two thousand and eighteen. So I wanna mahalo, you got a tough decision on your head, but I trust God. I truly trust God because this is not me, self and I. It's not about anybody but God's people that's been suffering on the waitlist. So Chair, I hope that, that will help you. Um, it's a snapshot of what Ahanui is all about and what the waitlisters did in preparation of G seventy coming in and DHL, your team. Mahalo, that's my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Cora, especially for your enthusiasm.
Thank you.
It's been a long road, so we're getting there. Thank you. Uh, next, uh, testifier is Ivalani Kurawaki and Kupuna. Uh, Cora, Cora.
Aloha, everybody. Thank you, Jesus. I got to leave a lot of day to see all the blessings. I thank the Lord because, you know what? When I went home to sleep, I say, Lord, give me the peace and the joy. And a poof, I went out. And I got out this morning and I took a bath and I was all up. Big, I brought pencil. The hardest part is to do that, I, but I thank you, Lord, that we all get to live another day. The hardest part is to do that, I, but I thank you, Lord, that we all get to live another day. Because we don't know when Jesus gonna come and take us home. I thank you, Jesus, because of the waitlisters. I never could understand, you know, the product that when we was talking about the construction of the land and all that. All I know is that the waitlisters got six million dollars, right? Six billion dollars is only for the waitlisters. So you can check it out. Because the waitlisters is the one that you gotta see through. Everybody gotta get off the waitlist. So I, I, I just trust you that you're gonna do your job. All of us gotta work together. We cannot do nothing without you. But I, that was my daughter, Cora, and you know what? I, I know that we live the life, you know, you tilted up the soil, you fishing, you go sixteen of us. And if we survive, everybody help each other. There was no selling, all about trading. You get something, evil. And that's why, um, the difference of us today is they look too much to the money. And if they cannot do it the right way, they do it the right wrong way. So this is why I say to myself, I say, Lord, I wanna work for you. Because why? There is a palace that is already made for us. That you don't need their rent, you don't need their water. After this life on this earth, that's what, for free, yeah? So this is why I want thankful for, so go ahead.
Aloha, everyone, I'm Ivalani. And I'm a waitlister. I'm also the Ahunui, um, vice president. And I sit also on the kupuna board of Ahunui. And you know, we are up in age and now we're testifying only because we need to see the legacy of Minshona Koheo of generational blessings. And you, we know that the, the, the line where it speaks of umaokeia okaaina i kopono. And in our hearts, it speaks to us that the life of the land is perpetuated in righteousness. And for many of you, I think we kind of straight away from that word of righteousness. In my knowing, righteousness is the truth. Why we're here, we have a purpose. What is our purpose? Our purpose is to aloha each other. And what else is our purpose? Aloha to our creator. So the reason I'm sharing all this is because over the years, I have been seeing a lot of my kupunas and my relatives. My one brother, he got his, he got his, um, in Maui, Hakeenui. And he was really forced into, to surrendering the land. But then how, how could he move? I mean, he's up in his seventies and there were no assistance. As to how he can move on the land because you, at that time, there were no water, no infrastructure. I mean, at that age, it's very difficult because many of the financial institutions, they're not gonna loan you any money. So yes, you know, we, I, as a kupuna, you know, I really have that, that desire, that few people that are in charge. But you know, I like to think that we are in charge, the native Hawaiians. I'd like to think that we're on the top ladder, not at the bottom of the ladder. But it appears through, through my growing up years, everything is, no, you gotta wait the process. No, you gotta wait your turn. And so I'm thinking to myself, how come, I mean, not knowing really what the process is, and in between the time, I see a lot of rules, regulations, policies, processes being blocking, you know? And how am I gonna be able, not knowing, and I'm not an academic or intellect? But I have common sense in seeing something is not right. And that's why I, I hold on to that, that word, that, that umaokeia okaaina i kopono. And let's do it the right way. And you know, from my learning, umaokeia in his full context is umaokeia okaaina i kopono, yes, so Christ. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, let's see, we got, uh, seven minutes before lunch. We'll take one more, uh, witness, then we're gonna break for lunch, uh, at that, after that, uh, for thirty minutes. And then reconvene to, uh, continue with the, uh, various testifiers. So the next one up is Wade Lee.
Hello, Jay Watson. Hello, Commissioner Helm, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Randy, all around Gumpa and staff. Hello, my name is Wade Hoa Pili Lee, a fourth generation homesteader. Yeah, my, my daughter, my homestead, fifth generation and going to my grand, my hiapo, sixth generation. That's who I am, so I get long ties with homestead. Me for talking about, uh, I wanna give you a brief history of, uh, Kalina Olu, uh, Naulu. We started this ten years ago, I came before the commission. First up by Mahana red light, so we can plant our feedstock for biodiesel signature indigenous plant, which is kukuna. Uh, we on phase two. Um, we put in application for Mahana red light and, uh, uh, whoa, uh, you pick, you pick. Uh. Two things wanted that, uh, by the red light was, was stopped erosion in Kavaloa Bay, which is the pull-up pull-up for the year down that side. And during the winter, the whole place turned red from the lepore. More moment, we have stopped erosion by changing the road. But that one is more moka or dry. Uh, somehow we fell through the cracks. We didn't get it, if I was sitting here ten years ago, you gave us that, we'd have the feedstock and stock already. Kukuna will be harvesting after ten years, so anyway. I'm not here for you, but I'm talking loud because, so you can hear. Uh, we were now implementing phase two. I'll give you wider name, Kale, uh, Naulu, Kalina Olu was given to I heard my grandma on the top of Kaulave, it is the rain cloud that surrounds Kaulave, Maui, Molokai and Lanai. And she told him that you go across go plant trees, umopalakua, because of the destruction of cattle and sheep of Molokai ranch at that time. Ruin all the trees, the rain cloud disappear. And we don't want that monterre now on Molokai. So we named after that because we like harvest every rain, like the rain come back. So what happened in Molokai, happened in Maui, happened in Kaulave, has a direct effect. Yeah? We wanna, I think we have the economic answer of stability to renewable energy. With the highest pin kilowatt in the nation for electric. Because of diesel. Fully, brother. There you go. But this is what, uh, what costs, uh, Molokai Electric for put out diesel and what they pay, yeah? Big money, if we was to plant the whole Holy Who of lands open right now, we could not meet the need of Molokai Electric. What they're using. Big, uh, economic opportunity for the farmers of homesteaders to subsidize their farm with biodiesel product, feedstock. Also to help them run their tractors, they look cheaper than the diesel we're paying now for our tractors. It is providing a green alternative instead of importing diesel to the cultivation of bio-compatible produce. Manufacturing, distributing is by po- byproduct utilization, fully, brother. Now, at that time, ten years ago, biodiesel had a pretty, wasn't that far advanced? And then the injectors of our tractor used to get plugged. Today, they get them down. Yeah, so we bought, we brought in two hundred five gallons, put it up at the homestead. Uh. Turn out, up in Holy Who, and we gave five gallon diesel for our farmers try and see what they thought. And I only had one complaint from my cousin, uh, Waterman Days, he said, when he uses truck, he go upwind, he come hungry because the exhaust smell like french fries. Because we, that time was using, uh, grease trap for turn biodiesel, yeah? Fully, brother, thank you. Right now, we do have a, a twenty foot container ready for distribute. Um, one homestead, no more industrial land for us, put this on top, I wanted to put it close. So that the farmers were accessible to it, yeah, so they get first hand to it. But unfortunately, we, there's no industrial, uh, farm for kind for, I don't know why. Uh, it just, it is, but, um, so we trying to acquire land for Molokai ranch, my best ranch, so I know we gonna get hard time. But to drop this container and, um, uh, service Molokai. Uh, and bring in the biodiesel so that, uh, our people Molokai can benefit off-road and on-road biodiesel to distribute, fully. We have two, um, Kalina Olu, uh, won't accept all kind of signature indigenous plant is the kukuna. But we also can turn sunflower peanuts, soybean, and we're gonna take the byproduct. Another A grade that they can sell out there, we're gonna take the off-grade, yeah? But if they have a, a place to put them, if they just let them rot back in the ground and we crush that to biodiesel. Uh, we are in partners with Pacific Biodiesel, we have been in partner with them for over twelve years, Bob King. And, um, establishing this is, so he the only hanai or hana, besides my ohana doing this, non-native, yeah? But, uh, he get Hawaiian heart. We get two crushing mills coming, uh, on our island of, the big island. Uh, but Pacific Biodiesel have stopped crushing because they've been using macadamia, not in big island, but it is, uh, feasible to just sell macadamia not oil, then be turning it to biodiesel. It's a lot more money, so right now, Bob King is using waste cattle, uh, to squeeze for oil. He bringing them in from the mainland. And so he gave us the two crushers, uh, it's in big island, we, we wanna send it to Waho first to, uh, make sure the thing Gary before we bring them Molokai. But, uh, I don't like move them over here, man, please put them, yeah? And make it accessible staging plant with a farm. Cue, once again, land lease so that we can farm more. Uh, and show the farmers that it is feasible for them to use this as windbreak and everything else and other crops. I didn't wanna bring in other oil products that is not here on Molokai, and when they looked at, hey, where this ugly pig came from? Or the lease bottomed for biodiesel, I didn't wanna do that, I'm gonna let the farmers do that, so they get blame. So our next deliverable is we like install the first, uh, post-harvesting process system, which is the crushing plant. Wanna complete our crop production studies and provide a model for future biodiesel crop production on Molokai. So that thirty-five acres we put in, uh, is to do a demonstration farm and also staging for crushing, uh, the feedstock for it. And producing biodiesel crops, prior use for Molokai. Again, fully. We do have an application and I just came here to give you some manal, so that when it comes before you, you kind of get some knowledge, what, what is this application about? We looking at K K map, five two zero one dash one, who both, uh, PPKR. Yeah, and planting trees. And, and that's why I here before you today, I wanna go back to, uh, give you the deliverables again, we're gonna bring you on tanker and deliver to those farmers who cannot come to the area. Cause now we gotta move out of Holy Who, we cannot put that pump up there. Wanna do a ag model, wanna do a nursery. And we'll be selling them around five dollars forty cents, dollar cheaper than any place on Molokai, for our farmers. We wanna give the homesteaders a cheaper price than that, at cost. Yeah, whoever bring the nuts in their help out, or cheaper cost for them, in return against the biodiesel for running the tractor. Now, I'll go to the cultural part. Kalina Olu is the rain cloud that go on Molokai. The rain cloud over here of Kalina Olu had its own name. And their name is Ehu Lau Ehu. I used to run one residential for youth in Mahana. And six o'clock in the morning, when I go in the mall, I used to rain on me, I had this cloud. Right when my cousin John came, he called, did he, hello, I'll have to come a call. But at seven o'clock, they bugger disappear. But I know the rain cloud, my father talked about that, he said, when he was young and him and Uncle Earl Pon used to go down Palau over here. Get the pineapple, make a circle, smash them and I sleep, and when you hit a wild pig eating, they shoot them, come back on the house, go home. So I told my father, oh, there, no more pig Palau, he doesn't shoot them all. He was like, no dummy, when the rain went stop, the pig went all run up the mountain. Uh, if I was to come in here and ask you for land, I asked for this stretch of land right where the clouds stand, I like plant trees for bring back that cloud. It has a significant to Kaulave, it has a significant to Umopalakua, to Lanai and Molokai. I think you had the best forefront commissioner, that you have a whole on all these islands homestead on. And instead of looking at individual problems of a Hawaiian, keep in mind of the whole aina that our heavenly father has put for us to take care. Kind of step back and look at everything what going on, observe, no look at the stats, no look at the kind, because our people never have written, look with your eye, makaala, pay attention, yeah? If we take care of land, the land will take care of us. Or we will destroy them to the max, the humans. And so now we gotta put back what get and then start over, so this is I'm here to say that we put in only for thirty-five acres for staging and doing one nursery. And showing the homesteaders what we can plant different bio crops, feedstock. So that they can go on their own farm and see that it is profitable for them. And also get a cheaper price on biodiesel, so. Thank you for hearing me out, that's, um, I hope we not fall to the cracks again. Uh, sixty-five years old, I was fifty-five, I don't think I can live off the peak any longer, you know what I mean? And it's kind of old, I, I really, I'm moving back, I'm living in Waho, I'm moving back Molokai. And I gotta do something over here, good, cannot be making honey, you know, all over. And so that, that, that's our plan for comeback and this is one ohana thing, our Leo Hana, who is? I'm correct a lot of guys, only homesteaders, Kalamulu never fail. American sugar came in and the state would let them, and we make their wells salted, they couldn't farm. So they invite kapu, they had all my tutu men in them, because they could kehere for the rain and they plant. Never have one flood. They would pray for that rain, and they would harvest, that's why that road in front of school is named Ferentz, Governor Ferentz came and awarded and made it with congressional congress and made the act because they were successful. Put the Hawaiian inside the kind, the desert, pray for rain, they became successful, next thing they did, tell them take them away, dough came in, you know that kind? The aloha committee, come inside, you gotta plant pineapple. Those who were Hawaiians who were smoking cigar, driving a big car, never participated in this game. I put in jail like, uh, anything. Are put in jail like anti-nanis, friends dead. I may have to tell you, I am the, one of the more openers of all those unreal homesteaders who work hard so that you get one job today or you stay. My tutu man gave up four hundred acres in Maui, one miserly dry land because they were telling him, give up all the Hawaiian religion and turn to God because he said, God, if you make Hawaiians live on homestead, I give this all up. All like you guys know, that is the history of Hawaiian homes. Yeah. And I am here trying again, which I succeed when my tutu man let me in. Okay, just mahalo, there you guys, I don't like it to the kind. Another year, Allah, mahalo.
Okay, great. Good luck on your project, looks like a good project. Next testifier, Laurie Buchanan.
Come to public meetings, let alone sit down for a couple hours in one colored shirt. Because I had to tell him, put on my shirt because the only way thing talk. So my testimony, I told the other, we really shot half of the agenda, just five minutes. Two-fold, one was to introduce my husband and then also to update you. Talk closer, okay. On the West Oahu Funeral Services, which was, is coming under the Y Nai Valley Homestead Association. And I wanted to thank this commission in December of twenty twenty-two. At the last commission meeting in December, this commission granted a right of entry for due diligence in the industrial site in Y Nai next to the sewage treatment plant. And so I wanted to update as to where we are. And also to say that next week, Tuesday, on April twenty-fifth, we will be updating the Y Nai Valley Homestead Association, giving them a briefing and update as to where we are. They also was supporting another project, which was alternative energy. Using the existing facility that is there, but not all of the facility, just a portion of it. So I wanted to thank commissioners for that. I know at the time commissioner had some concerns and I hope I can reach out and talk story. But I, my second point besides introducing my better half was to say how West Oahu Funeral Services will benefit the island of Moloka'i. So I don't think the commissioners heard about the benefits to beneficiaries on the island of Moloka'i. Because we from Moloka'i, all of our beneficiaries and people on Moloka'i currently needing the service of cremation, we send them out and we send them out to places like Oahu Mortuary or somewhere else that are not beneficiary own. And so, and we don't have control over the pricing. Or, you know, that we would be able to work on the pricing when we send out. So when we become established in Y Nai, the people of Moloka'i needing that service would come through Y Nai, West Oahu Funeral Services. So there's a real direct benefit to the people of Moloka'i who currently do not have that services. And it's purely an economic feasibility issue with the cost and expense of cremation and cremation unit and how to run it. With Moloka'i only having about seven to eight thousand people, the, you cannot just, it's not feasible for us to set up a cremation. And we've been asked this for a long time. About eighty percent of all of our commissions in the past five years, well, I would say the people are choosing cremation over body burials. And before I forget, I was listening to them talk about Public Works on Moloka'i in Kapa'akea. The county has Kapa'akea Cemetery. And when we heard them, they are visiting, came in over, Public Works kind of shocked me by letting us know that there was only seven burial spots available left in Kapa'akea. So beneficiaries do have the opportunity to use Homelani and other cemeteries on Moloka'i, like Kanakalua. But there are many beneficiaries that choose to be buried in Kapa'akea because that's where a ceremony is, it's in Kapa'akea. So people who live in Kapa'akea naturally want to be buried in Kapa'akea. So I don't know if the department can kuka kuka with the county of Maui because we have this, it's pretty critical and it's an emergency situation. Because all the lands encompassing the current cemetery belongs to the Department of Hawaiian Homeland. So if somebody can reach out from the county side and then get engaged with that, I just wanted the department to be aware of it. And then so again, back to the benefits of Moloka'i. I just wanted to make sure that this commission understood that there is going to be a benefit, not only to West Oahu beneficiaries and persons, but also directly to the people of Moloka'i. And then I wanted to get back to this guy over here, my right and left arm. The Riki Ohana has been providing funeral services to the island of Moloka'i since the nineteen fifty's. Myself and my husband has been doing this for about forty years. My husband has been the coroner's assistant to the Maui County Coroner, as well as working with Honolulu Coroner on many occasions and also providing assistance to the Maui Police Department. Our experience in the funeral service business is very extensive over forty years. And for us, it's not merely a business, but a ministry to our people. It's really a heartfelt ministry because there's nobody else to do it on Moloka'i. And we want to extend that help to the people on West Oahu, of which my daughter is, has been living there and married someone from Y Nai for a long, long time now. So thank you very much again, mahalo. Mister Chair, Chairman, I hope we can at the time support West Oahu Funeral Services. We hope to have our environmental compliance to the department in June and then give the department some time to take a look at it and then come before the end of the year. So thank you very much.
Commissioner.
Okay, thank you, Mister Chairman. Thank you, Laurie, and thank you to your husband for being patient all morning and waiting, appreciate you. And so in December, when you did come to Oahu with this West Oahu proposal, I did have concerns. And the concerns I have is just not my only concerns, it comes from the Y Nai Moku, it comes from the Nanakuli and the Y Nai Coast. And the proposal of the location of your West Oahu crematorium is, is next to one of our only medical facilities, which is the Y Nai Coast. We provide healing, behavior, food distribution and other amenities to the community. And next to the site, we have the YMCA. We have, it's on Farranton Highway and it's the entrance of the Y Nai Shopping Center. So it is the, your proposed crematorium is right in the entrance of the Moku of going into Y Nai. And these were concerns because it just didn't blend in of the location of, of where you selected on the only industrial site that we have. And so these are the concerns that were brought up to me as an Oahu Commissioner. And this is why I abstained on that. I understand you doing due diligence, but Laurie, we live in that Moku and we would have to drive by and see this every single day of our lives. Does a crematorium belong there next to our Y Nai Medical Center where we provide life? Lot of them don't think it should. So this is the reason why I brought this attention. And so I know that you're doing your project here in Moloka'i and you mentioned some of these benefits that would be for Y Nai, Y Nai Coast. And maybe you probably have to come back out and educate the community, I was, you know, and talk to them about what benefits opportunity? What are your hours? What are your prices? Will it be visible, like, you know, and things like that? I think, you know, in life, we all just got to be a little more educated of different projects. But I just wanted to bring this up to the floor in your attention. It's, it's nothing that I don't support, it's just that if the voice of my Moku and beneficiaries bring it to my attention and I have to look at these ups and downs. I come from the Y Nai Moku and so they do have concerns. So I just wanted to urge you and your group with Kapua folks that maybe more dialogue of due diligence, town meetings to bring this up again. Because it was really rushed through December, trust me. Yo' island was going out, everything went boom, 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 boom. So I just wanted to share that to you and I appreciate your vision, your opportunity and thank you for sharing. Aloha.
Thank you very much for that feedback, Commissioner, I really appreciate that. I think we wanted to, at least on Moloka'i, we look at death really differently, maybe because I was born into the business all my life. We really take a holistic approach. We actually manage the morgue at the Queens Moloka General Hospital. And we work in partnership with them because after a patient dies, it's really not their responsibility to continue care. And that's where we work really in conjunction. I did want to point out too that we also work closely with hospice Moloka'i. And so we, we often know who's on hospice. And we actually reach out before that time to help the patients in the transition and so.
I'm not really questioning your bio, I commend you for your resume and everything. What it is with Y Nai, yeah, and it's different from Moloka'i, is that for Y Nai, our Moku supported all these landfills. We supported all these homeless shelters with, with no beneficiary consultations, okay? So this is why the Moku is very particular, they're more maka'ala to see what's coming into Y Nai. And we have to, you know, because we still have to deal with the whole island landfills. We have all these shelters along our coast. And so, you know, you'll hear that, that we're always like the dumping ground. So they look at projects that are going to be one beneficial to the home, not only homestead, but entire coast. And what can help and benefit our people? So, you know, I'm not here to question your bio, I know all the experience you have, you're very well respected, you know. But there's a difference from Moloka'i to the Y Nai Moku Coast, so I just wanted to kind of share that opportunity.
Thank you, Commissioner, I will commit to extending outreach.
You know, we can talk story and bring it to the communities so they can understand, our kupuna council is there too. Like every island, you have your kupuna council, you got to go to your kupunas first, right? So, you know, we open that doors for you, how's that?
I appreciate it.
Mahalo, mahalo, thank you.
You want to have any last words? Putting, I will just drag him up here and I never let him say hello or goodbye.
No, thank you for the opportunity to present this to you folks and consideration. I, mine are real simple, I've been doing this, my wife said, we've been doing this for over forty years. It's been forty-three years, you know, been doing it with my in-laws and my brother-in-law Walter, you know, from from a long time ago up until now. And the reason why part of it is too, once my daughter married my son-in-law and lived in Y Nai and I got all my more openers down there, we became part of that community too and got to meet lot of, lot of people there, you know, and we, because we in the business, we had several friends of my son-in-law and people that we have come close with, that developed relationships with. And they even asked us, you know, about, oh, maybe you guys should come to Oahu. So that was, that was the reason. And of course, lot of the big factors has been always color and money, how much cost. So over here, I mean, you can, you can pretty much talk to everybody, we try help everybody because money hard to come by over here and try work with whatever they can afford, basically. And that's kind of like what we want to do and help, help our Hawaiians, yeah, in that way. And that's kind of what I look in at. Because I'm not one rich guy and I don't plan on leaving this or rich, but we want to help in whatever way.
Would you consider looking at the industrial parks though? Palalo Industrial Area or Campbell in that area? I mean, it's just, I just wanted to throw something out there for you to kind of dialogue.
I don't know if it's ready to go, but we actually ready to go because we already purchased a unit. So we have this unit in storage, actually. And I'm not familiar with Kalailoa or the readiness of the ground shovel ready for, to open up a crematorium. But maybe we can have two and three crematories, maybe in Kalailoa and one second unit. Because one unit can only comfortably probably do about a hundred persons per month. And currently on Oahu, there's between seven and eight hundred people that die monthly. I don't know if people are aware of that. And so we're going to a service of people, two people who have been waiting three and a half months to hold a funeral service. That's unacceptable to me, that really is unacceptable. But that's what is the current condition. But thank you, yeah, I would, I would like to open up one and even do an additional one, Kalailoa.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I'm sorry I'm making you guys stop, it was supposed to be five minutes.
Thank you so much.
Okay, the next testifier, Walter Ready.
I know it's lunchtime, so I'm keeping short. My name is Walter Ready, lot sixty-nine E, a nine-acre lot. And we split it up and gave our, one of our family guys six acres and we took three. And then Oahu Bayou, they got sick and moved back to the Big Island. So I ended up with three lot, three acres and trying to figure out how to get back, to put the lot back together again, but that's not the reason I'm here today. One of these days, I'll tell you about that, that problem. I'm here because I got a little bit excited when I saw this gentleman here being interviewed. And I haven't been coming to Hawaiian Home Commission meetings because when I go home to my homestead, I just like leave everything else behind and just to get my act back together again at my homestead. But what I wanted to do today was to kind of let you know what I know about Moloka'i so that we can make a better future for our island. And the first thing that I would like to let you guys know is that water is really critical on this island. So there was this project where the federal government gave a lot of money to build the Moloka'i irrigation system for homestead use. And then state politics took it away from the department and gave it to DLNR. Because they were going to develop West Moloka'i and they needed this pipe to get the waters to West Moloka'i. So all the politics got involved. There was no EIS back then, it was kind of like cowboy country on Moloka'i. So that didn't happen. So DLNR then gave the MIS to the Department of Ag. And the Department of Ag has been using it as the only water system that was making money in the whole state. And the funds were going to a general pot to help all the other guys. In the meantime, every time there's a drought. In the meantime, every time there's a drought, um, the homesteaders suffer. And what I'm here to try and encourage is for this department to take back the system that was built for them. Because without that system, farming olehua is gonna be really, really difficult. Because we got all these outsiders coming in on Moloka ranch lands and using all of that water. And once they start using that water, it's gonna be very difficult to stop them from using that water. Because you don't own the system. And that system could be making money for Hawaiian homes and also providing water for the farmers. So I'm encouraging the department to look seriously at taking back that system. Um, and I think a couple of years ago, the reason why they didn't wanna take it back, cause the system was old. So Senator Clayton, he put a lot of money in there and started fixing up the system. I don't know if it's totally fixed, but it's, it's a really good system. And it's an important system for us on this island. So that's why, that's one of my, my main pushes is to figure out how we can get water back to our, our ownership. Um, the next thing, um, some recent acquisitions by the department, because nobody else wanted it, was this place called Malama Park. It's in Konaka Kai, um, but it's like a, a diamond in the rough. It's really a central place that could be like someplace where the community comes together. Like if we wanna have the canoe race, we have to go all the way down to Aliolono, bus up your truck. No place for bathrooms yet. I mean, it's fun, but it's not the best situation. So now they're talking about getting the canoe race to start from Konaka Kai, which is where Malama Park is. So because that's a central, um, area, um, I think we could make a lot of economic use of that parcel. So staff had been working to come up with some ideas. But before staff actually took over the, the parcel, the county had already come together with the state to figure out how that parcel can be used for the benefit of the whole island. And it was going really well. And then Kayan Tunnel came in and dumped it. So that's how you guys ended up with it. But it, again, it's a diamond in the rough. It can be really, really beneficial for, um, some tourist kinds of activities where you can tell the tourists, no, you cannot go over there, but you can go over there. And if you go with these guys, they're gonna rip you off, go with these guys. And then go watch the, the video so that you know what you're not supposed to do and what you can and where you cannot go and all that kinda stuff. So it could, it could become a really central area. And that was the original plan for that, that park. It was a rubbish pile before. You know, on the way to the, to the wharf, you would have to pass all of these dumps that people are using on that land. And then the most important place for us on Molokai for our future is the lands that you have in Kalau Papa. Those lands are like the gateway to our north shore of Molokai. Molokai Aina Momona, because we have the greatest reef system in the whole state. We have fourteen thousand acres of one single reef. And that reef has been studied by the United States government and it called it an American treasure. And it's really sad because all of the dirt from our mountains are going onto that reef. And it's taking away our Aina Momona. So that's where we get, besides the deer, that's where we get our protein on that reef. So, in order for us to get our starches, it has to come from the north shore of Molokai. We have four major valleys that has millions and millions of gallons of water flowing. Wall to wall tarot terraces, all intact. That were built by a Kupunam and it's just sitting there. There's no huge trees or anything yet. Small paintbrush guava, avapui, those kinds of things. The problem is we did not have access to the north shore. So Kalau Papa can represent that access. We have a, a wharf at Kalau Papa. We have an airport at Kalau Papa. And we can, the first valley is almost connected to Kalau Papa, Waikulu. And that's where Kalau Papa used to get their water. There was a water line that came all the way along the shoreline. So we can have access on foot if we start with Waikulu. And we start planting all of the tarot terraces that are there already. So, the problem we have with Kalau Papa is that the reason why the park came was because of the Hansen's disease. And they were taking care of all of the people at, at, and now we have, I don't know how many left, four probably. So that we are very worried about what's gonna happen to that park. Once there are no patients there, is it just gonna become a Mecca for tourists? Because we have not just two saints at Kalau Papa. We're gonna have three saints at Kalau Papa. So you can imagine how important it is gonna be for people to come to this place called Kalau Papa because of all of these saints that are there. So we're not gonna be able to control that. And Molokai were very, very worried about what's gonna happen to that peninsula. So the problem with Kalau Papa is that we went through a process where we, the community was giving input. And that was like five years of input. And in comes this guy named Trump. And he just said, no need. And they stopped all the one oh six consultation stuff and threw all that stuff away. And we went to some kind of a programmatic, programmatic agreement that didn't take us anywhere. So we've been working really well with staff. Um, they have a lot of our concerns. They know exactly what we're trying to do and how to link us, the community with Kalau Papa. And I'm not sure exactly what they're gonna recommend, but we trust them and we like working with them. But we really want to encourage you guys to take like a serious position with the federal government. Not let them push us around the way we've been doing and leaving us out of the decision-making process. You guys don't have to allow the, what is it called? The contract? The general lease that you guys control with the federal government, you guys should take a serious look about all of the infractions that they were making. And we've been trying to work with them. So they have a lot of the kinds of problems that we, we saw. But we need you guys to realize how important it is and take a really strong position for the future of Molokai on that, on those lands. And the last thing I got on my, my list here is this place that we're meeting in, Kulana Oevi. This place was created by Monsignor Keke Kumanu. And all of the Hawaiian agencies said that they cannot do this because this is Hawaiian homelands. And Community of School said, well, we cannot do this. We can't put money into Hawaiian homelands. And, and LT said they cannot do it because of this and all. There was choke reasons why this place could not be built. But Monsignor wanted Hawaiian agencies to unify and to have a one place where we could all come. And when I heard this man talk the other day at an interview, he used the word unity. And us on the bottom has been trying to say to our leaders of all of our entities, whether it's Oha or the Hawaiian homes or whether, to come together and form some kind of a unit just like this, where you can bypass all of the rules and regulations that you all are under. And provide some serious leadership for progress in our Hawaiian community. Cause if you guys don't come together, I don't know how the people are gonna come together. So I'm here to encourage you guys to take a serious look at this place and provide the leadership to bring all of our entities back together again. So that we can make decisions, not one unit at a time, but as a lahui. So mahalo for this time for talking story.
Okay. Thank you, Walter. Thank you for your words of wisdom. Appreciate it, guys. Uh, we got one, uh, last, uh, testifier before lunch, John McBride.
Hello, Chairman and Commissioners. Um, congratulations on your, uh, I don't know if to congratulate you or do your condolences.
Still trying to figure it out, Mr.
I can tell you something. Buckle up. It's gonna be a rough ride. Um, you know, before I start, I, I would like to start with this. Um, if we can get ten seconds of silence for, um, a good friend of mine and he was a, um, commissioner, Wallace Ishibashi. He passed away in, uh, February. Go to Hawaii, come from Kyoka. Uh, fight for Hawaii. If we can give just ten, ten seconds, just ten seconds. Thank you. Thank you. Um, I'm here because of Kupunas. Um, I had somebody ask me to go down and see one Kupuna. And this Kupuna is in, um, Koneva. I'm, uh, from Kyoka, third generation. Can you hear? Better. You can hear more? Okay. Sorry. I know I eat this mic, sorry. Um, and so, um, I'm third generation, um, uh, homesteader. Pat Coila mentioned that there were sixty-one families. It was in Kyoka. My great-grand, my grandfather was the first over there. And since then, we still have that same property. So I, I, I just sometimes the name McBride no rhyme with Hawaiians, yeah? But Watson neither, yeah? So anyway, um, I was asked to go see this Kupuna. And, um, I went to see this Kupuna house. And as you know, most Kupunas, they, they really private, yeah, about their home and everything. And so I went to the house and I went to see her. And because she knows me from church, she said, oh, hey, hi, how are you? I said, fine. I said, you know, I was influenced to come and see you. And she said, oh, why? And I choose to tell you one story rather than to bring out figures and data. Because I think this is gonna have a deeper impression in your mind and in your hearts. And so when I came to this Kupuna's house, I look around and I knew now why, um, they told me for come to this house. The roof of four-four, puka, you know? I told her, can I go in the house? She not like me coming out. I understand that. No worry, I not come here for judge. I come here for help. And she tell me, yeah, but I not like you look inside. I said, no, I, 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 I promise. I gonna come for help. They're okay. Come inside. I take, I go inside the house. Four buckets inside our house. Water falling through the roof. You ever heard the song Jerry Santos? Hilo is such a rainy old town. It's a promise. Hilo is such a rainy old town. And let me clear you, you gonna puka in your roof? A kaka falls coming through your roof. That's how bad the roof was. Four buckets. And I look at that, oh, man. I was sober. I mean, I was like, cannot, this cannot be our Kupunas living like this. What can this be? And, um, I walk around the house where she's sleeping, right next to her, go another bucket. Water coming through the, the roof. Ah, I tell her, you know what? Ah, I, I, we gotta do something about this. And, um, she says, no, no, you know, it's okay. And I got the impression that she ma'aa live later there. She think that's how she's supposed to live. It, it's okay. You know, I, I ma'aa on the roof licking and I get buckets in my house. Ah, I think something's wrong with this problem. Cannot, this cannot be. And so, um, I tell her, no, you know, I'll go and help you. I start up on GoFund program. And I can get some of my friends, they all contractors, licensed contractors. I told them, this is a situation. They told me, John, get the funds. And I tell you something, we gonna put that house together. Tell them, okay, I gonna GoFund program going. And then after that, after talking a little bit more with her, then her daughter came. And she, her daughter tells me, John, you know what's been happening with my mom? She went walk outside because her bathroom no work. The shower no work. The toilet no work inside the house. So she had to go outside. We use the shower. She used the shower and after she power used the shower, when she went walk out, put on her clothes, she would fall down. And she couldn't get up. She went crawl her way out of the shower area into the garage where she first stayed. The neighbor's dog went bark and that's how the neighbor know she went fall down. Her face all bleeding. They took her to the medical center, take care of her. I, I couldn't believe that this happened. But she doing that because the bathroom inside no work. And so I getting all these resources together and then I find out that this lady went qualify for Nahazda. Nahazda program, two thousand sixteen, I think. And she never get the help. Because they said, and I could be wrong, correct me if I am, they said that they never spend the money. And so they never spend the money. They couldn't spend the money. And they lost the money because they couldn't spend them. I could be wrong. Is it, am I correct? Okay. Nahazda couldn't, you know, the, the federal government give money for, and she went qualify as one of these people. But her house never get, never get fixed. I don't know on the face of this earth who don't know how to spend money. I found out Hawaiian homes don't know how to spend the money. And I thinking, how this is possible? Two point five million dollars. Nahazda program. I went in and I estimated it gonna cost me about thirty thousand dollars to put this lady's house together. I just got one estimate from my, my, uh, the contractor. Told me ten thousand dollars on cost for the roof. They gonna put in the labor. The labor free. We just, just get us the funds. Commissioners, Chairman, how can we have our Kupunas living like this? To today, she still living like this. How is it possible that we have Kupunas like this slipping through the cracks and think that they ma'aa living like this? I, I cannot believe. My question to Chairman, how can we help this lady? Because if I help her, she gonna be the poster child of the new Kupuna that Hawaiian homes couldn't help. But if Hawaiian homes help her, you guys gonna be heroes. Guaranteed. Because not one of Hawaiians think that this is unsensitive subject. Even non-Hawaians believe that Kupunas is unsensitive subject. I don't know about you folks, but I grew up, you take care of the children and the Kupunas, you watch over them. That's how I was, I saw I grew up. I think most Hawaiians grew up like that. We always watch out for the, the children, take care of the Kupuna. But this Kupuna, I believe, is not the only Kupuna in the state of Hawaii that living like this. I think every association can find somebody in their area that living like this, just that we just don't know. Just that we just don't know. Kafaka, Kalamaula, Panaeva, Kyoka. We gave 23, I look, I just really looked this morning, Hawaiian ones gave 23 grants. Not one of them went to kupunas. Now Chairman, I'm a businessman, and I understand, you go on, you play full. Let me clue you. I know understand that. You get waitlisters, I mean, I can go down the list. But as one, as one businessman, I've learned something. I can chew gum and walk. But tell me for chew gum walk and flip one coin, oh, something gonna get neglected. And to me, if you cannot prioritize what is important. Kupunas to me are important, waitlisters are important. When you start bringing in other stuff, you gonna get your plate full and nothing gonna get done. But if you focus on two things and get that done, and then work with the next two too, you gonna get something done. And so I asked this committee, I asked this chair, what can we do for this lady, this kupuna in Panaeva? Is there money for her, to help her? If you look up, GoFund me, and I'm gonna tell you something. The person who went tell me for go check out this lady, he died on February 16th. His name was Wallace Ishibashi. This lady is his mother. It came to me in one dream. And I went to see this lady. The people from the grave, they crying for them. Hawaiians, we mahala the evil. We take care of the evil. What about our people who living? They sacred too, our kupunas. I think they real sacred. I give you the challenge. I told her name, I'm not gonna tell you. And if you send somebody there, please let me know before you go, because she gonna be puiva. She not expect nobody else coming, because she's a private lady. But I told her, she said, no worry, John. Don't worry, because Hawaiian homes gonna help. And you know what I told her? Not gonna happen. Not gonna happen, pu'ala. Her name is Pu'ala Patricia Delarias. The mother of Wallace Ishibashi. And I told her, but you know what? I gonna ask this commission to make me one liar. Make me one liar and go help this lady, because I told her, it's not gonna happen. And I take that challenge to you. Make me one liar. Because this lady need help. Whether you folks gonna help her or not, I tell you something, she gonna get the help. Even if I gotta pay for that. Because you know what? This lady cannot keep on living like this. She cannot. I ask you, and I pleaded you, make me one liar. Mahalo.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Oh, thank you, Mr. McBride. Thank you for sharing that. Thank you for sharing your mana'o on our kupunas. And you know, our kupunas are special. No matter where they are, what island they are, they are also special. From Wa'ne'i to Molokai, we treasure our kupunas, yeah? It is so unacceptable to see kupunas live like that, and it's very sad to hear that. You know, in 2021, the Nahazda, they received over $30 million. And I'm gonna tell you this, is that just last year, I was a commissioner since 2019. And just last year of 2022, I realized that the Nahazda, some of the Nahazda funds that could be used to fix rehabilitation of wheelchairs of homes. And I say this because in my avu po'a in Nanakuli, we had kupunas that are wheelchair, and I didn't find that out to last, this last year. And I was sick to my stomach knowing that there were Nahazda funds to do this kind of rehabilitation. So I shouted out to the community in Wa'ne'i, the beneficiaries. Went to these, went to kupunas houses and said, we're gonna help you. Nahazda funds, so put you on a, get some ramps, build it on and on. And so, you know, it's had that, I just found that out last year. I was a commissioner since 2019. I think I should have known all of this then. I'm not sure about my colleagues, but I, I picked it up just last year. I was excited, wow, we got so much money, we got millions of dollars with these things. And so I hope before we leave this meeting, that our chairman can give you something, at least something, or some direction that there's Nahazda funds and they can connect you with something. Because I hate to see we leave Molokai and just not have an answer today for our kupuna, whether it's in Molokai, whatever island, because it's painful to hear this. So I hope that we can direct you to a staff or somewhere where there's funding from our department that can at least lead you to that direction, but.
We, you know, we have a, you know, the GoFund program. We have the GoFund program, it's, it's about $6,000 right now, but I, when I heard about the Nahazda fund that she qualified for, but, but it never happened.
So what I'm trying to let my chairman know is that before we leave, at least staff can help you and direct you before we leave back today.
Like I said.
So if there is an opportunity for her to receive that, then by all means, the Nahazda fund should be used for that. Rehabilitation, helping our kupunas with homes, wheelchair ramps, whatever, that can cover this cost. So, but thank you so much for sharing.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you.
I, I, like I said.
Commissioner Freitas?
Can I hear you?
You're on mute.
Here we go. Can you guys hear me now?
Yeah.
We can hear you now.
All right. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. This car, it's close to home for me for a couple of reasons. I've known Uncle Wali, I actually talked to him briefly before he passed. I meant to actually call him, you know, the week. I meant to call him that week he did pass, and when I found out he passed away, it's a regret I'm gonna have to live with. You know, I reached out to him when I first got him, was nominated to be the Westaway Commissioner, and he gave me some invaluable mana'o. And he's somebody that I, I will always treasure, I'll treasure those conversations that we did have. I was, I was supposed to go to his funeral, but I got sick that, that morning, so I wasn't able to make it. And I even, people told me about this, what you just told us at, at his funeral. And I, I, I appreciate that too as well. We'll figure this out for you. You know, and like a commissioner to Rio is saying, you know, to echo that, there's, there's kupuna that live in my district up here in Pukapu who are probably going to do the same thing. And I, I hear of these things kind of through the grapevine. You know, there's this kupunas who come on to our, to our meetings regularly that just don't say anything about it, whether they're Ma'ha to it, or they just, you know, don't wanna ask. So, you know, as these, as we hear of these things, we, we will work together with the staff to, to, to fix them. But you're absolutely right, and we can't have a kupuna living like this. I think all of us were raised to respect a kupuna. I wouldn't want my grandma or my mom living in that kind of situation either. But just for my personal, personal mana'o, thank you for bringing this up. And it will be, it will be looked into. So thank you.
Thank you, Makai.
Commissioner Wong.
Hello, John. Mahalo for being here. I'm just gonna start by saying I would be remiss if I did not also acknowledge Wali Ishibashi, the time that he spent here as a commissioner. And, and the enjoyment, those of us who had the opportunity to work with him, how much we enjoyed him being a commissioner and the contributions he has made, had made to our beneficiaries. So, but thank you for taking the time to acknowledge him as well. Going back to his mom, the question has been asked. And so we refer back that question back to the staff. Because I really would like to know what's available today rather than what failed yesterday. And I would like to refer that question back to our chair to see what we can do to assist his mom and any other beneficiary in need. If we have the resources, the hope is that we can koku'a them to make their lives better. So, thank you.
Mahalos.
Chair. Thank you, John, for your, it's a very sensitive testimony. You know, we have that same issue here on Molokai. And you know, our kuna's very private, they not gonna come out and want anybody to mahoi. But, you know, last year I had a phone call from someone on, I don't know, Molokai. And it was this person's mother-in-law that lived in Panaeva. About the same situation. Houses, you know, ready to fall apart. So I contacted, I think Mike, I did, mentioned it to him. And, you know, to see if the department on Elo can assist. So I haven't heard anything since then. I don't know if this person got the service from the department, whether she qualified for the Nahazda. So I really hear your pain. You know, especially knowing that that was Wali's mom, that was really so.
Yeah, Eric.
Wali was a good man, you know, he's done so much for the native Hawaiian communities. So thank you for bringing this up. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, John, Mahalo. Mahalo for bringing this to us. I cannot say anymore than what our fellow commissioners have said, but I totally support. I would look forward to getting some solutions. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mike.
Yeah, John, that is a priority for us, the kupuna. We've looked at, in fact, we were driving around today with Commissioner Bland, and we identified sites, or a site actually, where we'd like to, especially for this island. You know, especially where you have homesteaders that are elderly, they can't, you know, cut the grass. I mean, it's just too much for, especially if their spouses passed away. So, you know, the, I, I think part of, and I, I call it a solution, is to start to develop kupuna housing with kind of, the focus is their care, but also putting in them, putting them in an environment where they can be cared for. You know, and that's why, one of the things we're looking at, and we've started a dialogue with Luna Lilo Homes, who, that's their specialty, and they're one of the Li'i trusts that we would like to work with. So we're gonna do that. And so we've identified maybe six different sites. We also recognize that, and for me, especially as a developer, I recognize, you know, you try to minimize your costs, but you put up something that's affordable and doable. And so with kupuna housing, a very big cost is providing the programs, the facilities to provide the care, what have you. And so one of the approach we're trying to use is to locate the kupuna housing close to medical facilities, you know, like Wa'ne'i Camp, like Queens, and other facilities where they're already in existence. It's a no-brainer to put something up adjacent, where they can have the services in age and place. Especially if you can do it in a way that it creates an opportunity for not only the workforce housing that is there to provide the care, but you have student, students that also put up student, student housing, and they also can provide the care for the, the kupuna. So we're in discussions, we're looking at various sites. And we are gonna move on that in, in order to, you know, address this aging population. We look at our waitlist. About half of it are kupuna, you know, so it's a no-brainer that the people we should be targeting are the kupuna, because those are the guys on the waitlist. Those are the guys that have the priority, and they should be treated in such a way that we provide products that they wanna move into. They're not gonna do a three, four bed or home, they don't need that. So if we start to just focus on the large, single-family homes, that's not gonna do it. So townhouses are, multiplexes are, high-rises are something that they might consider, depending on where it's located. I mean, we, in my, with my developer hat, we just finished one in Moiliili, 105 units, cost 40 million. But we did it in a way where we could access all these different funding sources, and it's up. It's gonna be happening. And similarly, with the 600 million, we can do that. We also have the Nahazda that started to come in, and I promise you that we'll figure out what, you know, we need to do to take care of your, 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 your kupuna. Yeah, that's, that's very unacceptable. So we'll, we'll figure it out.
You know, can I just ask for two minutes? In the early 1970s, Billy Bima was a chairman. I don't know if you folks remember Billabima. She was a chairman. Living next to me was Victor Kameheli. Victor Kameheli was one of the best surveyors on the island of Hawaii. He worked for Imata. And he was a beneficiary living next to me. And I was a young boy, I was about, I was about 20, 21 years old. And he was sitting on his, on his steps with his brother-in-law, and they were drinking one beer. And I was on the, on the stairs with my, with the son, his name is Craig, Captain Craig. And in comes on car and get Hawaiian homes on top. And when a car came inside, out came Billy Bima and the deputy. And she came up to, to, to the stairs and she said, are you Victor Kameheli? And he said, yeah. And she goes, are you the one asking for one home on this property? And he said, yeah. And she said, how you expect to get one house when you sitting on your okole over here drinking one beer? And you know what he said? Chairman, let me tell you something. I had to quit my job for qualify. Because your rules said that I cannot make this much money. So I quit my job so I can qualify. And she turned to her deputy and said, is this true? And he said, she said, yeah, it's true. He making too much money, so he quit his job so he qualify. No pressure, Chairman, but you know what she said? Get your job back, you gonna get one house. I know that she went back, and she had to bend some rules and look away from some policies. But in three months, when Bodo was in his house, Bodo's in his place, and he was getting one, one, one new house. I think that's where we at. We at, we gotta bend some rules over here, and we might have to look away at some policies for get it done. And you know what? That told me, wow, that chairman gets some power. And she used her power 100%. Because I never did see no chairman do something like that. And in three months, when Bodo was in his yard, Bodo's in his, his house down for the new house. Thank you.
Thank you. And you're the comment.
Yeah, just the comment, thank you again. So, so I'm understanding, Mr. Chairman, that you will assist this problem with your staff, with Nahazda, and so we can get a follow-up and, or tutu, kania. So is that what?
I plan to be at a Gwamia meeting.
I mean, I understand about kupuna housing, the need for kupuna housing, but some of our kupunas, yeah, they want to stay in their house. They want to be able to, to stay, live, and die, and play, and have their kupunas there, you know. So not every kupuna wants to go into a, a vertical kupuna housing. But I, before we leave this meeting, I just wanna make sure that I, when I leave Molokai, that there will be a follow-up done.
Yeah, there will be a follow-up.
Okay. Thank you. Mahalo.
Thank you. Let me also address that issue you, you mentioned about that person having. Let me also address that issue you, you mentioned about that person having to quit his job. You know, that is something, kind of the reverse of it, has been the problem where the products that we've been, the department been putting out are the turnkey units. Where you gotta have a really good job, you're gonna make a lot of money before, so you can qualify for the three, two-hundred-fifty-thousand-dollar mortgage. And so, we're changing that. We're approaching and creating different models, where if you lower income, use a tax credit to purchase. We'll work with Habitat for Humanity, we'll provide the vacant lot. So, you wanna do owner builder, you wanna do self-help to provide, you know, sweat equity, as well as the turnkey. We're also gonna use a part of the six hundred million to provide subsidies for those guys that can't, you know, qualify for the ITAC or the turnkey, so that we, in fact, will not turn away anybody on the waitlist, no matter what their income is. And so, that's gonna be a change that I think for the better. And so, I think not only, we're gonna have a lot more people that are gonna actually participate in our program, but I see an increase. But I also say that with respect to Kuna, that's a different program that we will start up to address those in living in decrepit, dilapidated homes that need the help. And that's where contractors like you, you know, I hope to give you guys more work, and not for free, and not where you get the free labor. We'll give you guys jobs, you know, we welcome your participation, and maybe suggesting all these other smaller contractors that need jobs, who will work with you guys, so you can help the people you wanna work.
I, I, you know, I'm sorry, I'm not a contractor, but I get contractor friends. I, I, I do tools.
Work with your friends.
But, but I have resources that I can bring out to take care of that.
Or maybe you can be the quarterback.
I, I, I would throw the ball as fast as you like. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. So, we're gonna do a little recess, we're gonna feed these unpaid commissioners some food. We'll take a break, be back in about half an hour.
Does this mean I have the full attention of the commission by myself?
We didn't hear that. Oh.
It was planned that way. Okay, gang, let's get started. We're reconvened approximately 1:50 PM. We're taking the J agenda testifiers, and next up is Faith Chase. Or no, okay.
Aloha. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, great. Nice to make your acquaintance Chair Watson. I've been waiting a really long time for refreshing leadership. Um, I am a full-time Kohiki Nui homesteader, and I'm here today just to share some background. Um, there is one of the, I'm sorry, my camera is broken. I wish I could, I could show you my face, but um, there was a original, in the beginning of Kohiki Nui community, there was an organization called Living Indigenous Forest Ecosystems, otherwise known as LIFE. Out of LIFE, there was an inspired, actually directed and inspired organization called Kohiki Nui Game and Land Management Ohana. About five years ago, I had some kupuna from Kohiki Nui reach out and ask, ask for assistance with an unfortunate loss of a right of entry to Kohiki Nui Game and Land Management Ohana, otherwise known as KJMO. Um, KJMO spent $13,000 of its organization funding to lobby this body of commissioners, uh, some that have come and gone, some that are still there, and the state, state senate Hawaiian Affairs Committee in efforts to end this aggressive and inhumane, at the time cattle, what they were calling cattle eradication. Um, this group included lawyers and a retired judge, and we actually succeeded in ending that operation. Fast forward to today. Last year, under the leadership of Chair Ila, a proposal was prematurely pushed through that in fact did not make full beneficiary reach. I don't blame the commissioners for making the decision they did because I, myself and three others tried to get on the J agenda, and Ila, Chair Ila, former Chair Ila restricted our testimony. So had I had the chance to, had we had had the chance to clarify things, I think the decision to authorize the current, what they call ungulate eradication would not have gone through. So today, the community is really divided. The two homestead associations, one of them more a homeowners association, one of them a homestead association, are, there, there's not continuity, there's not fluidity, there's not transparency, there's not full beneficiary reach. So after studying and residing in this homestead, I have decided to go back to school, and um, I am revisiting the Kohiki Nui Community Based Economic Development and Makai Management Plan, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to share with you and any other beneficiaries and waitlisters, and certainly Kohiki Nui homesteaders, that we are having a, my organization Farmer's Voice Hawaii, which has advocated, advocated for agricultural enterprises and fishermen too. We are hosting a two-day revisit of this Kohiki Nui Community Based Economic Development Makai Management Plan. At UHMC, we have some of the principal faculty of urban planning from UH Manoa who are the authors. They're going to be instrumental and speakers, and we're even trying to find some of the students who actually work on the plan, who are now since received their degrees and can contribute perhaps in that urban planning space. This is my effort to clarify some trajectory that needs to be improved. Um, and it's a peaceful academic sophisticated reach to clarify things to help you commissioners and chair make better decisions for Kohiki Nui Hawaiian homestead. Uh, particularly in my interest is the agricultural endeavors and the, of course, building homes. So I just wanted to give, just wanted to give my history and meet you, and I will, you'll be probably seeing a lot of reports coming through, and that's the backstory of how we got to this space because there are some decisions and some things that might need to be retrofitted and revisited and relooked at, and I appreciate your time and attention and taking this job, and like I said, I don't blame any of my commissioners for making decisions that were, that they would not know about. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thank you, Paige. The next testifier is Blossom Fittera.
Blossom.
Okay, I'm sorry, my technical skills are thoroughly lacking, but mahalo, Mr. Chair, once again for the opportunity to address the commission. Um, one of the things that I, we've been spending a lot of time talking about Act 279, um, and the opportunities that it presents in developing homestead lots, and once again, I'd like to thank Land Development Division for coming out and staying true to the plan. Uh, where I know on behalf of beneficiaries who are examining that, they're really happy to see the number of lots that are being proposed to come out within this very challenging timeframe. One of the things that we've also been talking about is a need for beneficiary, particularly those on the waitlist, to stay up to speed. As the strategic plan from said development moves forward, we also need to make sure that beneficiaries on the waitlist are prepared to take those lots, when those lots, um, uh, come about. As you know, Mr. Chair, in your previous time with the commission, um, our beneficiaries on the waitlist from the gamut in terms of financial readiness. Um, and we believe that it's important that, uh, our beneficiaries have the opportunity to get ready to be able to determine what type of lease that they're looking at. So I submitted a written proposal to the commission uh, for review. It's, it's pretty lengthy, and I apologize for the lateness in that, and I'm hoping that by just introducing this, we'll have an opportunity for you guys to do a review, and maybe at the next commission meeting, uh, we can have a more concrete discussion in terms of what I'm talking about. And so, uh, please keep in mind, as we are, we are very appreciative of the work that the commission is doing as well as the department in moving the needle forward for homestead development. Um, and while we do still have some concerns with the plan, I think those concerns can be addressed uh, in, as a very near future. Uh, we want to just make sure that as the department moves these homestead lots forward, that our beneficiaries are ready at the same time to be able to take those lots and therefore fulfill the mandate of Act 279 and reduce our waitlist. So, uh, mahalo, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, please have a safe trip home, and we'll see you next month.
All right. Thank you, Blossom. Uh, the next person to testify, Kekua Inomoto.
Aloha. Um, aloha mai kako in our Hawaiian homes commissioners. Yeah, I'm gonna start my video. Aloha. Okeko in moto keia mai kamoku puni o opi inani, advocating on behalf of the Shah Maui Lina Imoku Puni Council and Pa'upena Community Development Corporation. I had the marked honor of flying to Oahu March 31st to address the Senate Ways and Means Committee and House Finance Committee. I was among some 250 individuals advocating for two minutes for a legislative grant in aid or GIA for our respective nonprofits. Immediately afterward, Commissioner Patricia Kahana Mokutariya took me in tow to the senate chamber where we witnessed the senators almost unanimously confirm Kali Watson as Director of the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. Then we recessed to the Capitol Rotunda where I met Deputy Designate Katie Decot, and we gathered all together for photo-taking with Commissioner Chairman, with Commission Chairman Watson and his wife. It was an extraordinary experience amidst my more prosaic work, work as a homelands leader, grant writer, and advocate. In the latter realm of homelands activism, Pa'upena Executive Director Emma Yap wrote, emailed a January 31 letter per his request to former DHHL interim director Ikaika Anderson. The letter requested that appropriate DHHL personnel deploy up-country Maui water credits to secure a water meter for a 127-acre Keokau Waihuli homelands tract for which Pa'upena has a right of entry. Our goals for the acreage are, one, to train beneficiaries and other native Hawaiians and community members in farming and ranching, and two, to provide a blueprint for beneficiaries and homestead organizations on how to productively access our trust lands. Thus, Chairman Watson, Commissioners and DHHL staff, we seek your support in our quest for a water meter to service trust lands and trust beneficiaries. Lastly, Maui developer Everett Dowling called me a week ago. We discussed federal home loan bank programs to mitigate home construction and mortgage, mortgage costs for Puunani prospective homesteaders. During the call, Everett divulged that Dowling Company plans to build 389 and 207-unit Maui homestead subdivisions in the future. As Mo'Kapuni President and Sovereign Council of Hawaiian Homesteads Association, or Shah statewide secretary, I urge beneficiary input into the planning of these and all homestead subdivisions. After all, the recently completed 2022 DHHL General Plan, page 19, states, Awamo Kuliana, that is shouldering responsibility, quote, acknowledge the shared Kuliana of the department, beneficiaries, state, federal, and county agencies, Hawaiian-serving organizations, and all of Hawaii toward fulfilling the mission of the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act Trust, Hawaiian Homes Commission Act Land Trust. Foster trust, communication, and transparency among all parties to work toward the vision, unquote. In closing, I welcome you, Kali Watson, to a new chapter in your continuing Kuliana to our lahui. I urge fast flow to DHHL applications for an up-country water meter, and I call for a commitment to beneficiary input in the planning of all homestead projects. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Uh, the next person to testify, Christine Kaehua Ea.
Nicely said. Very nice. Uh, thank you, Chairman Watson, East Hawaii Commissioner Kalakini, West Hawaii Commissioner Freitas, and the rest of the island. I'm hoping I can share my screen. Yay. I'm very excited about this. I don't know if you can tell. It's been an emotional meeting. I've never been one to, to one of these meetings. It's nice. Okay, let me know if you can see the screen. Oops.
We can see.
Can you see the screen? Okay?
We see your presenter view.
I know. Trying to get down.
From beginning?
Yeah. Hang on. Let me get, there we go. Oh. Good work. Okay. Sorry about this. I was already. Okay. Go back to you. It's just, it doesn't wanna let me down to the bottom of the screen. Well, we're gonna move forward. I think. Yeah, it won't do it. Well, anyway. If, if this is okay, is it too small? Can you see? Can you guys see the screen? Okay. What's on it? I, you guys, you guys shouldn't have a packet of it. Hello? Leah?
Yeah, um, we're just trying to figure out how to help you.
Yeah, I can't get the bottom, let me see if I can get the bottom.
So we assume you already tried to hit from beginning in the upper left-hand corner?
No, very good. Thank you. I'm used to seeing the bottom and not having the tools on there. Okay, how's that? Okay, basically, my objective with this presentation, oop, and it's just moving, um, is to present you with the vision and determination that, uh, we brought forth from Na'lehu, southern tip of O'Koi Island. Request the approval from DHHL to move forward on land lease in Hilo, near target on Railroad Avenue, uh, for a temporary manufacturing site, pose a couple of questions and a possible solution for you guys to review, and then mention a relationship of an idea that I struck with DHHL just recently. I was born in Hilo, and part of my family still resides in Keokahapanaeva area. I was raised in the San Francisco Bay area and decided to move I was raised in the San Francisco Bay area and decided to move to Kaua permanently in twenty fifteen. Due to my radio station business that requested my help in twenty eleven. During my first two years, though, I moved thirteen times. I had everything in containers ready to go because I moved so much. It was all because we're, we have nothing but vacation rentals out here. The first design of the tiny house on wheels I developed was because I needed a place to live, but I wanted a home that had everything to it. So I created Stargazer Industries in July of twenty sixteen. And immediately started meeting with the Hawaii County and state officials to find out how to obtain a permit because the code stated. There was a requirement for a permit, but there were no construction parameters. Unpermitted tiny houses had been and continue to be on TV, the newspapers and on Facebook being sold. Both on Hawaii Island, Maui and Oahu. Oh. December thirteenth, I'd had a bunch of meetings with the county at director and mayor level and December thirteenth, twenty eighteen was pretty much the final meeting. It seemed that it was going to take a little longer than expected for everything to go through. The result, though, was a document, the twenty eighteen International Residential Building Code Appendix Q for tiny houses. That was the construction component that the county was missing. After this meeting, we acquired a sale and we went and built one of the tiny houses that that was designed in twenty nineteen. To that code. And we invited the county out and stated that we would be the first in line because we wanted to ask permission. We would be the first in line. Once they adopted the code, then COVID hit, all construction was shut down. And now over the past year, we've been building everything back up. County Hawaii couldn't be more supportive. State Land Use Planning Division is wonderful. The Contractors Board has given us blessing. We've got all of our licensed engineers, one of which our structural engineer is actually located in Pennsylvania because I couldn't find anybody here. And our attorney as well as twelve clients that are in line to purchase with us. Because they found us without any advertising and believe in what we're doing. Our goal is to, well, I don't know why it's jumping ahead, but our goal is to offer. Truly affordable housing. Instead of a shell, if you look around and do your homework in in the islands, there are a lot of developers here. Some of which bring stuff in, so it doesn't create jobs. Our goal is to make sure that what we do, we don't just provide a shell because. As we all know, a shell will remain a shell as time goes on, life happens. So what we've chosen to do is our eight and a half by twenty tiny homes. Comes with the permits, the engineering and all the modern conveniences to live twenty-four seven. Including two hundred and twenty gallons of water filtration, thirteen point five kilowatts of solar power. An approved toilet from the Department of Health. Took me two years for that one. Full kitchen and bathroom washer and dryer, full without deck, full without awning, down to the smart TV. Three of my custom sofa, green tea infused clean mattress, linen set shower curtain and a non-toxic fire suppression system. Our tiny house products have two foundations. It just wants to jump. It's so excited. It wants to jump for some reason. Hawaii County did adopt the Appendix Q code in twenty twenty. But nothing really went out to the community about it. And as we promised them, would be the first in line. Sadly, we're still the only company in line to receive a building permit for the tiny house products in Hawaii County. But we hope to change that when we launch our marketing campaigns coming soon. We also have a Hawaii Island financial path for homeowners. Whether it's our tiny house post and pier block products or DHHL families and our tiny estate models. So this is the one we did in twenty nineteen. And pretty proud of that one. Tile tub and shower. The lady in the picture there wanted to see if she could do a yoga pose and have enough space. We also have the tiny escape pod that's on wheels. And it's a twelve foot by or fourteen foot long that can be pulled by smaller vehicles. So our partners, I've cultivated our list here that you can see. To be as close to green buildings possible from non-toxic fire suppression systems. And solar batteries that don't catch fire to lower no VOC products in a universal design of light, air and flow of mobility. Our foundations are trailer, which is custom built out of Oregon that comes to here and we build everything. On island from the trailer up or the block eco block post and pier that's actually done here in Hilo. So our models are wheeled and our tiny dwellings, the wheeled obviously aren't trailer, the tiny dwellings are coast and pier. They're identical except for the fact of their nine-foot ceilings for the dwellings. So eight and a half by twenty with floor plans that streamline the materials costs and production times, therefore keeping the retail price affordable. That's the key. So here's where I humbly ask you as the commission. We would like to formally request that point five acres be open to Stargazer Industries Inc. for a land lease. Located on Railroad Avenue in Hilo across from Target, which if you see my background, that's where I am. Not really, but I'm in South Point. To be set into process immediately for preferably only a five-year term with a month to month. Our long-term goal is to continue developing plans towards our future office and retail campus in the District of Kaua. To provide jobs in that area. But this takes sales and a temporary building site so that we have the capability of. Processing, funding and buying our own land and developing the project ourselves. We contacted Christian K., Senior Planner for the County of Hawaii to confirm the zoning classification we would need to be. DHHL, DHHL site being requested is classified MG, which would allow us to move forward legally manufacturing our tiny house wheeled products. So on the site, we would simply be pulling our trailers onto the parcel. There are no hazardous chemicals, fossil fuels or alike in our construction process. We are completely solar electric with a solar battery system that does not catch fire and no hookups will be required for the site. We're gonna use four forty-foot shipping containers with a roof system that will act as a manufacturing facility. An eight-foot temporary rented fencing system to be installed. During business hours, we'd be open to staff, county and state officials and visitors. But all of those things that would make up our manufacturing site can be easily removed. The only thing that would be left would be the gravel for leveling. This would ensure DHHL the opportunity to not have fifty-five years of a renter, but only five years. And allow you to have more flexibility with that property for the future. So here's some questions that came up. You currently have a DHHL company on the corner of that property and I don't know if you can see behind me, but there's a. And I can't see myself, but there's a concrete building. It's the Sandwich Isles Communication Incorporated. Hawaii Telecom is leasing that building. So here's the question. One, is Hawaiian Telecom leasing the building and not being asked to lease the entire ten point six three acres for fifty-five years as we've been asked to do? Question two, should we seek a sublease with Hawaiian Telecom or Sandwich Isles Communication for the point five acres? Our solution would be to ask you. DHHL Commission as the governing body over Sandwich Isles Communications and the tenants, Hawaiian Telecom. To allow us the opportunity to take a small little piece of the pie. And create something that will benefit the community. Leaving your tenant untouched and potential for the long term that that parcel to be utilized. So I came up with an idea last year and I actually spoke with Stuart Matsonaga and the former director Tyler Gomes. Tyler Gomes as well as Katie Ducat for this year regarding thirty-eight vacant lots in Discovery Harbor near Na'lehu. I'm actually sitting in Discovery Harbor. I have a house here. After forty-five years of no activity, twenty-two of those lots were opened on the list in twenty twenty. They were partially cleared. The problem was that the families didn't qualify because of the cost of the homes and the loan. So in talking with Stuart and his team. I was describing the possibility that we might be able to provide lesser expensive homes that come with everything. If they come with the water, the power, the hookups, everything, everything's provided, even a few furnishings to get people started. We also have a loan provider, as I mentioned previously, that does DHHL construction and mortgage loans. For our tiny estate, nine hundred and fifty to twelve hundred and fifty square foot, two-bedroom or two-bath. Two-bedroom, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath homes. We're looking at about three hundred thousand for one home. I'm trying to get that down to two fifty. We've got some amazing vendors. And for us, it's not about making the money. It's about everybody getting a piece of the pie to pay their bills, but not at the expense of the homeowners. So there, to us, that would, the families would have a better chance of qualifying for the loan because the loans through this particular partner. Anything that goes over two fifty comes out of the pocket of the family and that's pretty hard these days. So we're hoping that we can continue this conversation regarding Discovery Harbor. Stargazer Industries would like to be one solution for DHHL on Hawaii Island. It all starts with us being able to manufacture in Hilo on the proposed point five acre lawn. Mahalo for your time. Malama, pono ahuiho.
Thank you very much. Let's see, we are under a time constraint. We got ten minutes left, so we're gonna try to. Get the, there's three remaining testifiers, so unfortunately at two thirty we're gonna have to cut off guys. So the next one, Alan Cardenas. Alan Cardenas. Okay, no response. Charmaine and Robert Power.
Aloha, good afternoon. Welcome Chair. We just wanted to say that for the, I'm sorry, just a minute. We're here to express our First Amendment right. We have gone through the process of reporting our concerns to DHHL of our neighbor's floodwater being pushed along our wall. And also trespassing and vandalism happening to our property at night while we sleep. We have appeared before the Hawaiian Homes Commission for the past two months to our to complain. To enforcement in January not being addressed. Commissioner Turuia suggested that our case be forwarded to the liaison, which the chairman, which then Chair Anderson agreed. We agreed to that because someone will finally look into our case until we found out that the liaison was Stacy Eli. The same district representative that we contacted previously in September of twenty nineteen. About our issue of trespassing vandalism and unauthorized computer access. He knew that nothing was going to be done. At that time, her recommendation was to contact Pastor Alan of Non-Affluently Neighborhood Watch. In our meeting with Stacy on April twelfth, twenty twenty-three, we reminded her that she previously advised us to contact Neighborhood Watch. We informed Stacy that the reason why we didn't think the Neighborhood Watch was much help is because three of the eight neighbors in a cul-de-sac. Are part of the Neighborhood Watch. One at the entrance of our road, the second across from us and the third at the end of our road. With our home being trespassed and vandalized since twenty sixteen, we know how ineffective this Neighborhood Watch is. Stacy then informed us that she needed to consult with the AG as to what DHHL's next steps would be and she would send us a letter. On Friday, April fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, we received Stacy email that stated that back in September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. My neighbor obtained the proper permits. If Stacy had looked at the permit instead of cutting and pasting what we submitted to her. She would have known that this neighbor's permit is for a three-sided wall. Any wall constructed along our property is a violation of their permit. In the same email Stacy cited from, she neglected to state that Francis Lum suggested that regrading or backfilling needed to be done. To change the direction and flow of the rainwater and DHHL needed to enforce this as a landowner. We spoke with Francis Lum and Dan Ugawa of the Department of Planning and Permitting on April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. And confirmed that the permit was approved for a three-sided wall. We let DPP know that the neighbor's wall does not end at their property line, but turns in along our property. DPP will investigate as they would, as they could not find a permit for the construction of the wall along our property. Stacy continued to include information from documents we provided to her rather than conduct her own research. And passive aggressively stated that we, quote. Have been advised numerous times as this is a civil matter and that DHHL and or the commission will not be taking any further action. Therefore, we ask that you withdraw your request as you have already been told repeatedly that this is a civil matter, end quote. And that, quote, relief for these types of matters are more appropriate for for before a court rather than before the commission, end quote. Our second issue is trespassing and vandalism on our property. In DHHL's handbook, it states that to notify HPD and DHHL enforcement, both which we are doing. We are filing police reports to HPD and have submitted a three-inch binder of our police reports of the vandalism that's happening on our property. To enforcement in January twenty twenty-three. We began collecting evidence in twenty nineteen and still do as trespassing and vandalism continue to occur. We have been told by HPD that they don't have the resources to investigate and this type of crime is normally committed by someone in the neighborhood. In our meeting with Stacy last week, we stated that trespassing onto our property has been ongoing. Prior to us moving into the property in nineteen ninety-nine. The previous owner built the wall and fence around the property. And installed four by eight plywood alongside of the neighbor they knew was trespassing onto their property in the beginning. This is the reason why they sold and their kids didn't want to live in their childhood home. As to former Chairman Ila's recommendation of us moving. All the people we have shared our story with agree that by us leaving, it would only leave the next, leave the next leasing with the same dilemma. It is discouraging to know that the process stated in the handbook is not working. If leasing should report crimes to HPD and enforce, enforce and inform enforcement of the crime. Why doesn't enforcement follow through with their own investigation? Rather than relying on HPD and other agencies to rectify the situation. We know that enforcement division has been shorthanded for years. Why haven't positions been posted and filled? We have taken a proactive role in our situation and have learned valuable knowledge. That we can take and share with the Hawaiian people of how broken DHHL is. We just wanted to make this statement just so everyone is informed of our situation. If anything changes, we will, we will contact you if we hear anything from, anything from DPP.
Thank you very much. Our last testifier, we got five minutes.
Kelly, real quick, Chairman, real quick, Sharon. Charmaine, thank you so much for your testimony and the reason I wanted to say this is that. You've been to this, to the commission since twenty nineteen bringing up these concerns. And to the neighborhood board and to your city council member and to your past representatives. I'm starting to hear that Stacy Eli, I'm not sure what her position is in the department if she's the. Beneficiary liaison that goes out to help beneficiaries, but I'm sorry that, that. Her report wasn't what you wanted to hear because all your documents went to her when she was a representative. So I'm not sure where we can move forward to assist you and your husband. So I'm not sure where we can move forward to assist you and your husband in Nanapuli Homestead. This has been an ongoing, I mean, I've heard this since 2019, and you're here just practically every month. The other thing you mentioned that she brought it to the AG's office, I mean, is the AG familiar with this? Has it come to your office at all, or?
Yes, this office or the Tawa's request for a contested case came to the AG's office back in, I think, November of 2021. And that's because the department had recommended a denial of their contested case hearing request. The department looked through the evidence that they had provided, which includes the HPD reports that were mentioned. And they had concluded that there was no evidence to sanction a contested case hearing. The commission heard or got the request in April of 2022, and after hearing the same evidence, you had also denied their request for a contested case hearing.
Okay, so you understand this, then Charmaine, what the AG just mentioned, then?
Yes. Yes, but we just wanted to bring it up to the commission that, you know, these instances of trespassing vandalism, unauthorized computer access are still ongoing. So, you know, it's just disheartening to know that regardless of what happens to my home, you know, it's like electrical power has gone out. We had crosswires, our dogs got poisoned. You know, we wake up one morning and we have three holes in our radiator for one of our cars. We just used the car the previous day. So, you know, tires being flattened, things like that is consistently happening. And I understand that HPD needs to do their due diligence and investigate. But that's where the ball is stopping. HPD continues to deny our reports of unauthorized computer access. They don't even come out to check our computer system. So, oh yeah, I just spoke with Sergeant Lipka yesterday regarding a report that I placed for unauthorized computer access. And he denied giving me our police report number because he claimed that there's not enough evidence with the four hundred pages of logs that I showed him. So this, so it's just been frustrating because, you know, as things progress, you know, it'll only enable the perpetrators to continue doing what they're doing, and they're going to get more bold.
Yeah, maybe it's became a civil matter then now, Charmaine, that you know.
I'm sorry.
Went to every avenue. It's a civil matter between you and your neighbor, you know, next door.
Yes, yes.
I don't know what else to say into helping you today, but you know, maybe the next step is to file a civil matter with your neighbor and
Yes.
Get a mediator or something in court, though, but just wanted to address you. Thank you.
Charmaine.
Yes, thank you so much.
Charmaine, we are running out of time. Running out of time, but I do want to say, Chair, what I would like to do is revisit all of the reports that were submitted to the the department and just do another review. And also, Charmaine, like to see all of your most recent reports because civil might also equate to an administrative action that we might be able to take. So that's all I have to say. More questions than answers today, but I would like some follow-up. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Paul.
Thank you. Thank you for your work.
It's thirty gags, so we'll have to adjourn. So everybody can make their flights home. And unaddressed items, including what you're talking about, Commissioner, we'll pick that up and as well as take a look at it administratively before then. And we'll defer the, I'm sorry, Dane Kahal, but you're gonna have to come back, so to our next month's commission. I apologize. Entertaining a motion to adjourn.
Sumo.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Again, I just wanted to thank the host, Molukai, our kupunas, the ohana, for hosting us here in your beautiful island of Molukai. Thank you for your hospitality, the great food, and all the love. Thank you. Aloha.